Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Welcome to the August 20, 2020 meeting of the Barnstable Town Council. And unfortunately, we have to remain physically closed to the public due to the coronavirus. Thank you for being with us this evening. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councillors. Bogan.
Present.
Clark. Cullum.
Here.
Dagwan. Rap Kersetti.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Levec.
Present.
Neary.
Present.
Schnep.
Here.
Connaughtsey.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
Next forum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. If we could, please, have the Pledge of Allegiance, it's going to be led tonight by Councillor Schnep. Thank you, Councillor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councillor Schnep. This meeting is being recorded and transmitted by the town of Barnstable and is being broadcast over Channel 18 under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. If anyone is planning to make an audio or video recording or transmit the meeting, they are required to notify the Chair before doing so. Thank you. We will now have a moment of silence. We have so much to consider with almost 170,000 Americans have died from the COVID. So if you keep all of them in your thoughts, our whole country. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now open for public comment. I'm going to ask, there may be many people that want to speak tonight. I'm going to ask you to please try to keep your comments really close to that three minutes. I greatly appreciate it, giving everybody an opportunity to speak. When you heard many people say the same thing that you said, if you could maybe let it go, or you certainly have a right to speak. But please, you know, try not to repeat and repeat and repeat. But you have a right to come and say, I agree with this particular point. And you may have a part of the rationale for that that's different than what's been presented. So please do so. Our goal is to run the meeting as open as we possibly can and make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak and to express themselves. If you're going to speak at, when we come to the item, especially, I think, Item 192, if you speak at the public comment and you're going to say the same thing again at the hand that we opened for the public and the meeting and the item, then I would ask, please, that you don't repeat the same thing. So, but I realize you might not be here for that. So if you want to speak at public comment on the issue, please feel free to do so. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, I do want to note that Councillor Dagwan has joined us, please. Okay, so we'll open for public comment. Thank you very much.
Lynn, do you have any public comment on the phone at this time?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay.
Sarah, do you?
Yep, I have someone to bring them over. I have to say, I'm a little behind on getting my public comment list together. So it's going to take me a minute.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Laura Cronin, if you could unmute yourself. Now's your chance for public comment.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Good evening, Town Council President, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I would like to talk on this open forum to make a request that the Town Council take their business until the public can be face-to-face for any of the essential issues that we really work towards, trying to find a public forum that we can participate in. Items like budgets and presentations and things like that are good for Zoom format. But anything where we have to or relying on the public or making decisions that affecting the quality of life, our neighborhoods and other things like that, and that are nonessential, should be really either held off or wait until we can find a forum that the public can participate in a more public way, a face-to-face way. Things like the planning boards, zoning boards and things like that, there are certain things that probably could be done for that. But if you have anything that is not essential, we should wait till we can have a different forum. Zoom is not a forum for public input. You have, if you haven't done so, try sitting in a waiting room. You can't hear anyone else speak. And then they are forced out to allow others in. And you can't still hear what the meeting's going on unless you have your TV going on. And that's also coming on. The residents should have a forum where we can speak freely. And I understand the situation and the governor's mandate, but other towns are finding a way to meet in public to participate and face-to-face. And if you haven't yet, try speaking in the meeting and just try not understanding what other people are saying. This format has removed the personal contact that we used to have with the town when we could have a discussion together and maybe change someone's position by listening to when they speak or speaking when they really weren't intending to do. But you can't do that through these Zoom forums. And sometimes you could trigger a new idea or thought and get people thinking. We have tough times, but we don't have to sacrifice our passion for our town, which the Zoom intimidates people who are otherwise may want to participate. And as a side note, I would like to be able to use this forum. If it's inappropriate, you can please stop me, Council President. But I just wanted to comment on some observations and recent statements made in public meetings and by some committees and standing committees. And Councillor Hebert has always said, and I think he still repeats it, that we are the public and you work for us. These committees and boards, they work for us. And we need to stop, we need to find a way to stop belittling, condemning our residents because we disagree or we've lost confidence in what we are being told or planned. The recent FOIA information that came out regarding council interactions with each other was bad enough. But when the constituents are being made to be the enemy committee, the committee chain, and they show their contempt and bias against the other villages towards the public, how can we believe they will even be hearing us anymore? This is a breach of trust, and we will take a long time to bring it back. Anyone can ask for this information at any subject. The original request came from trying to understand how we went from point A to point B without public hearings and taking place and to confirm facts stated in public. What came in light was an unfortunate realization that the people we elected had no regard for who we were and who we are and stopped listening. Zoom didn't cause this forum, but it certainly isn't helping us heal. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Next through Zoom public comment is Anne Schulte. Anne, you may unmute yourself now.
Okay. Good evening, Councillors. My name is Anne Schulte, and I live in Centerville. I want to start out tonight by complimenting Sarah Beal and her professionalism, courtesy and patience in which she always conducts herself while she manages us in the Zoom Corral. I don't know her, I've never met her, but I think she does an exemplary job and is someone the town of Barnstable can be proud to employ. Thank you, Sarah. My questions are directed specifically to the town attorneys on this call. There are currently 12 seats of a 13-seat council filled. Before we go any further tonight, I would like to know first if there is a vote of any kind taken tonight or in the future, what is considered the required vote count? In other words, how many votes does it take to get something passed? Is it a simple majority? Is it a two-thirds majority? Does the vacant seat count as an automatic no vote? Does it count at all? Is the total number of votes based on the number of people serving in them currently or just the numbers filled? Also, if someone recuses himself, is their seat still counted as part of that total? I think many of us witnessed the July debacle at the planning board meeting when no one seemed to know what end was up. Not one, but two of the town attorneys confirmed twice that the motion did not move forward and the meeting was subsequently closed, leading the public to feel that the motion/vote had failed, only to wake up the next morning and learn, as Felicia Penn so eloquently stated in the paper a day or two later, poof, it was gone. That was embarrassing and highly unprofessional of the town. And if I may also add, hurtful to the citizens of the town that there was no explanation, no apology, no indication that someone messed up and wanted to correct it. No, it was just gone. Talk about fake news and alternative facts. It should be crystal clear tonight before any votes are taken as to how things are considered. Secondly, if there is a vote taken on the STAR matter tonight, will there be any recusals? I would hope that if a councilperson or their family members have any sort of vested interest or opportunity to benefit from such in Barnstable or anywhere on the Cape and Islands, they would recuse themselves. I would also trust that the person or those people would recuse themselves before any discussion on the matter takes place. Again, my questions, how are votes counted and will there be recusals? And as always, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Did Elizabeth Warfane have a chance to speak?
Sorry?
Did Elizabeth Warfane have her chance to speak?
No.
Okay, Elizabeth, this is your chance for public comment. If you can unmute and... You need to unmute, Elizabeth.
Thank you. I'm here to speak in favor of supporting the development at 255 Bain Street. As you know, it's really important to have a development of housing where designated opportunity zones and downtown zones are located. It's better for the community, it's better for saving money with infrastructure, and it's better for, you know, supplying a density in, you know, downtowns, which planning and development would say is a best practice. So I just wanted to support what Rob Brennan is doing and hope that the town can help support it. Because we all know one of the reasons that building affordable and mixed and market rate together, why it doesn't happen is because it's often unaffordable to rehabilitate, you know, in areas where you already have building done. And the last thing we want to do is contribute to more sprawl on Cape Cod, which is not a best practice. So please, you know, consider supporting his project and other projects in the future and help make sure that they happen. Thank you. That's my story.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next up for public comment, we have Peter. And Peter, I apologize, Prig Baki. You're up.
Yeah, hi, and good evening. I just have a clarification. And when Sarah asked me for public comment, I just wanted to speak on the short-term rental. Is this the general public comment section?
It is, yes, Peter. It's the general comment.
Okay, then I apologize. I give up my time. Thank you.
Peter?
Yes, sir.
Are you able to speak when we open up the audience? Can you stick around?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then you can speak then. Okay, Peter, thank you.
Thank you.
Next for public comment, we have Elizabeth's iPad.
You need to unmute your microphone, ma'am.
Sorry. I was told we would have some discussion or update about No Bottom Pond. Is that the case with this meeting?
What pond, I'm sorry?
No Bottom Pond. Is that going to be addressed at this meeting?
Perhaps in the manager's comments, but I'm not aware of it coming up. Would you like to speak about it right now?
I just, I would like an update because I understand there was cyanobacteria and some sort of algae or morin body type of bloom. And I'm told there is now a drainage pipe going into it. And I want to know where that's coming from. Because of course, we all have requirements to be very careful about planting natives and not trimming things and whatnot. And if a drainage pipe is going in there, then it's futile for us to have those restrictions. And that's all. I just had that question.
Okay, Elizabeth, can you say the name of the pond again?
No Bottom Pond in Katuut.
No. Okay, well, thank you very much. Somebody might be able to reply to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Have a good evening.
Thanks.
Hi, we have Nick Athles to speak now. Go ahead, Athles.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. So I live in Centerville, precinct four on Elliott Road. And I'm calling about the short-term rental issue. My neighborhood, especially some of my neighbors, have had some experiences with the short-term rental. And they haven't been favorable. But I did want to highlight something that I am a Realtor. I'm a member of the local Cape and Islands Association of Realtors. And they have a campaign that strongly suggests that there's groups in this town that are trying to get rid of short-term rentals or traditional rentals as we know it. And on their website, it talks about for generations that this has been going on. And they're quoted as saying, there are solutions that won't hurt the economy. Let's work together to get this done, end of quote. Also goes on to say, working toward a balanced solution, end of quote. Another one, there are solutions to protect what has always been done, end of quote. This is part of their campaign. And again, after reading the zoning amendments ideas that the Centerville, Greater Hyannis, Austerville and West Barnstable Association put together, I read both of those documents, it certainly appears to me that the civic associations are doing just that, that they're trying to find solutions to protect what's always been done, but in working towards a balanced solution along with keeping an eye on the fact that they don't want to hurt the economy, and they're trying to work together to get things done. So for those, I know the council has reviewed this diligently, so I'm not so concerned about what they have or haven't reviewed. But the general public, people in the town of Barnstable, if they can review these documents that the civic associations have taken a great deal of time and effort to put together, they'll see that they are trying to work towards a solution that works for everybody and is fair and balanced while also protecting our neighborhood, which is greatly important. So I just wanted to comment on that, and I thank the association. I thank Barnstable Watch. And I thank the Town Council for strongly considering these amendments and these ideas to try to work together to come to a solution that benefits the neighborhood, benefits the residents, and makes our neighborhoods continue to be attractive places to live in. And on a side note, I just want to highlight, I want to thank Patty Shadow, John Ziefton and the rec staff for doing a fantastic job this summer at the beaches. I know they had challenges there, but they've managed things greatly. And I just wanted to highlight them as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Nick.
Next up, we have via Zoom Kathy Koplik. Kathy, you may unmute yourself now.
While we're waiting for Kathy to pull humor into this, I definitely am going to hold it silent to three minutes. We're not going any overboard. Got one person's smile. Elizabeth, Elizabeth, on the, we have all your faces. And Elizabeth, you're still with us on screen. And if you want to wait till after public comment, but then if you want to, you can watch us on Channel 18. Okay? Thank you, Elizabeth. Gordon?
Kathy Koplik is now on. Kathy, could you unmute yourself, please?
Yeah, I'm unmuted.
Okay, welcome.
Okay, my comments are going to be delivered by Vincent Pulio, who is the homeowner here at 51 Queen Anne Lane.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Well, thank you. My name is Vince Pulio. I live on No Bottom Pond in Katuut. In July 2017 and again in June 2020, the pond experienced high levels of cyanobacteria and turbidity. We received official notification that the pond's water was dangerous to humans and pets. We reported our concern to Daniel Santos, Director of the Department of Public Works, and to Jessica Rap Kersetti, our Town Council rep. But we did not hear from either of them about this matter. Karen Melkus Benjamin, Coastal Health Resource Coordinator, has been monitoring pond water quality on the Cape and has shared with us that the first issue that must be addressed to mediate the problem is a drainage pipe on Rayland Row. She told us that the sediment and nutrient mix is a major source of trouble. Without solving the pipe discharge problem, it will be impossible to reduce nutrients-stimulating bacterial bloom. We have sent photos to the DPW and the Town Council of the massive amounts of water runoff dumping directly into No Bottom Pond. We can send them again if need be. The town needs to move quickly on this issue that impacts our health and quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince, and thank you, Kathy, for bringing this to our attention. We greatly appreciate it.
Are you stuck with us now?
If you could unmute yourself and you can close down. If you want to go to Channel 18, you can watch us on Channel 18. Or you could, that way you'd hear if there's any comments.
Okay, where do we go?
Channel 18.
Channel 18?
How do we do that?
That's on TV.
On TV, local channel.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Will we miss the rest of the meeting then, or?
No, no. Are you on Comcast?
I'm using my iPad. I've got you on Zoom link.
Oh, okay. But if you're on Comcast, you should be able to get Channel 18, local channel.
Okay.
Okay.
And the rest of the meeting will be on there?
Yes, you'll see the meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay.
Lynn, have you picked up anybody?
There's nobody on the phone, and I don't believe, I'm waiting to hear back from Sarah about anybody on Zoom.
No, I think if everybody I sent in has spoken.
No, we have Bob Schulte on screen.
Okay, no, Bob is here for the public hearing. Bob, if you wouldn't mind going back to the main session until we get to the public hearing.
Okay, how do I do that, Sarah?
Down at the bottom, click Leave Room, and it will take you back to the main session. Thank you. And did John Crowe speak?
I would like to speak on this issue.
Mr. Crowe, is your TV on?
It's now off, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, John.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you for the chance to say just a few words tonight. A majority of the civic associations, a truly diverse group, are pleased to have sent you a consensus view on how we'd like to amend the Barnstable zoning and general ordinance proposals. Our goal is to preserve our rental traditions and our residential neighborhoods, both. I would like, I won't take time going over them here. I do, I can't do that in three minutes. For those at home, please find them at BarnstableWatch, one word, dot com, BarnstableWatch.com on the page called Citizen Regs. I want to make one point abundantly clear. We support short-term rentals. We encourage you to preserve our Cape metal traditions. Our amendments do just that. We don't need to choose between our rental traditions and our residential neighborhoods, the kind we grew up in, where you actually know the people in the houses around you. We're asking this town, this Town Council, not to cast votes that will lose that for generations coming up behind us. We ask you to prioritize residents, those who live in homes here and those who also rent their homes to others so that more people can experience Cape Cod. We ask you to do what dozens of popular destinations around the country have done, put residents first over off-site investors who buy up homes and use them as businesses. We ask you to consider the effect of your decisions on housing availability and housing affordability. You can't allow an unlimited number of homes here to be used as hotels and then say, now let's get to work on our housing crisis. This vote in this matter is about our housing crisis. Our ask is that you consider, discuss and vote on each of our amendments. We continue to desire to work together on an outcome that's good for the most people. We have over 44,000 residents in this town and in comparison, a handful want to turn homes into profit centers at the expense of their neighbors. Let's do the most good we can for the most people. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you very much, John. Are we all set, Sarah?
Yes, that's all we have for public comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you very, very much. And I hope that you heard the compliment. One of the first callers complimented you with great work. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open it up now for council response to public comment. Councilman Neary, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. I would just like to address Laura Cronin's comments. Frankly, what she brought up, I have noticed it seems a level of inappropriate behavior among people in these times has really risen to a level that I've not seen, boy, I think in all the years I've been alive. We can really all do better. I know many of our lives have been affected in these times. And frankly, I would make a suggestion that we all make a point to shut off the TV, give social media a little bit of a timeout, get outside, breathe a little fresh air, and maybe check on your neighbors. I think if we do that, we'll all feel better. And I think maybe we can at least... I think if we do that, we'll all feel better, and I think maybe we can at least engage in some civil conversation. Let's hope for that. Again, I think we can all do better. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Aneary. Madam Vice President, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and it's good to see everyone tonight. And thank you for the public coming out to speak in regards to No Bottom Pond. A little background information, No Bottom Pond is surrounded by homes that used to be part of the old golf course. It is off Rowland Road, which is a public road. There is no public access to No Bottom Pond. There's no town way to the pond. And I know over the years, we've had concerns with the cyanobacteria in the pond, and the pipe has been identified, the drainage pipe there has been identified as a point source or runoff. And as we're all aware, stormwater mitigation is very costly, and we're, it's somewhat of an unfunded mandate put to us by the state. So I know we're addressing runoff little by little within the town, so perhaps I'll defer to the town manager, and I know we're having an update from the DPW Director Santos and see what the management is considering for mitigation at that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Mark Els, Tom.
Please.
I would just, if it's acceptable, DNC Santos is ready to address that now, so if that's okay.
That would be fine. Thank you. Welcome, Director Santos.
Yes, good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Yes, we are familiar with the issues at No Bottom Pond, and we have working on a number of initiatives relative to not only that pond, but all the freshwater ponds in the town. And you may have heard me say in the past, there's 180 ponds in the town of Barnstable. And this is a significant effort to identify and remedy all the sources of road runoff that may go into these ponds. But we have contracts in place based on appropriations that you voted for. We are sampling the ponds, and that includes No Bottom Pond on a regular basis to understand what the issues are. Freshwater ponds are very complicated and complex as to what the sources of contamination is, and in particular, what the sources of cyanobacteria are and what conditions cause that. But I would definitely agree that what we should do is, which is within our power, to minimize or eliminate road runoff into ponds directly. And that is our, that's our mission, to eventually do that with all of our ponds, particularly on public roads. And in the case of No Bottom Pond, we're aware of this issue on the town road, and we are actively designing a solution to remove that pipe of discharging to that pond. I can't say at this time whether that will solve the problem, but it will help. It definitely can't hurt, and it will eliminate that aspect of concern for the pond problem. But just, just a point to be made on these freshwater ponds, particularly those that are very densely ringed with development, one of the major concerns is septic systems that contribute to those ponds that are close by and lawn fertilizers. So these are primarily the issues in a lot of these freshwater ponds. While runoff removal will help, eventually, something has to be done, and the quickest and easiest thing generally is to minimize or eliminate any fertilizer application close to the pond. That would be a recommendation to all the people that live in the vicinity. Happy to discuss this at any point in more depth in the future. Hopefully, that addresses the question for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Santos. Any other councillors? Council Lavec, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate that. Just want to address Laura Cronin's comments, and we, you know, you're, just so you know, you are being heard. We understand the difficulties with Zoom. I've talked to a number of constituents, and there's a lot, there's a lot of difficulties with that, for sure. And, and I just, again, I think I speak for a number of councillors that it is a concern, especially for the non-tech savvy, which I sometimes fall into that category quite often, I find myself. And so I just want you to understand that, too, and, and to kind of mirror Council Aneary's comments, I do agree with you that maybe there was some inappropriateness, and there's a trust issue, but I do believe moving forward that we all will try our best to win back that trust that you mentioned that was lost. So I did want to address that. I didn't want that to go unanswered. Also, too, Mr. Atzalis, Nick Atzalis, your voices are also heard, and I also want to mirror your comment. Not only have the Recreation Department with Patty and John done such a great job with the beaches, but they've done a great job with the recreation as a whole, trying to make as many things happen as possible, and I just wanted to give credit where credit's due. A full Little League season, and I know sometimes I'm known as Mr. Baseball, but it was a sport that could be played, and a full Little League season was played, and it wrapped up this past Saturday, and a lot of families were able to enjoy that, work through that, masks included, social distancing included. And I know it wasn't a perfect thing, but I do appreciate your follow-up, and I do believe that your true intentions at all times, even when you had to be maybe the bad guy, was that we continue to play and that the season wouldn't get stopped. And it wasn't. It went through, and I kudos to you and your staff for helping guide the program along and held, hold accountable, and so that it could be, and the kids could have a great time. Also, too, Nick Atzalis is also Coach Atzalis. He coached the junior Centerville Coyotes, who had an 18-game season, pretty good showing in the playoffs, and also to the senior Coyotes, which is basically mirrored the Legion teams, Junior Legion and Legion teams this year, the coach Dylan Morris and David Murphy, who got the job done there as well, and were able to use our, the Keon Park and Judy Scarafio Field there, and Lowell Park to some degree, and see some baseball played there this year in the absence of the Cape League. So thank you so much. I just wanted to give kudos to them, and appreciate your time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Lavec. Any other councillors' comments to the public comment? Council Bogay, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to echo Ann Schulte's comments with regard to Sarah. She is a tremendous asset for the town, and I appreciate her efforts each and every meeting. As to the issue of trust that was raised by Laura Cronin and Ann Schulte, it is unfortunate, and as Councilor Lavec said, we will do our best to try to gain your trust, whether that be by virtue of our conduct or by virtue of explanation as to what transpired at the planning board meeting, so hopefully we'll have a discussion of that later. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bogay. Any other councillors? I would like to say to Ann Schulte, please, what will happen is before we go to any vote and we go to an item on the STIs, we will make it there very clear what a, what a majority is, what a, what happens if somebody refuses themselves in terms of the count, what would be a simple majority, that will be explained, and the options to the full council to make sure that we're very accurate when we take that vote. I would say to Laura, to Nick, and to John, there was a statement made about me, it wasn't completed, but somebody else completed the statement, and the statement is this: If we wait until President Hebert, nothing will get done until we hear from the stakeholders, have quality conversation and debate, and vote on behalf of the best interest of the citizens of the town of Barnstable. And we pledged ourselves to do that, and we're going to continue to do that. Thank you very much. If there are no other council comments, we will close public comment and move on to the town manager communications. Thank you very much. Town Manager, Mark Els, thank you.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager, and this is the Town Manager's Update for the period of June 7, oh, I'm sorry, July 17, I believe, through August 20. Initially, I'm going to have Ann Quirk provide us all with an update about voting. There have been a lot of questions relevant to early voting and mail-in voting, and then just the regular elections, and so please, take the time you need, and I may pause before I continue my update, so that the council can certainly ask any questions that they have relevant to the great work that Ann is doing.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome, Madam Clerk.
Well, 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 it's nice to be here with all of you. It's been kind of a wild time here in the town clerk's office for the last few weeks. I can report to you, as of yesterday, we have processed 8,333 requests for mail-in voting. And that's, that's a feat. That honestly is a feat. Early voting went through the legislature recently as no excuse voting for, early for the presidential, I'm sorry, the state primary, and then again for the November general election. So we have been inundated with, with requests, and we're processing them as fast as we possibly can. The early voting will, I believe that Sarah might have a, something she can put up for us, possibly, that will show you about early voting, and there you go. Look at that, Sarah. Yes, election information, great. We have this lovely thing now right on the website, right on the, right on the homepage, which is wonderful. So you can just click on Election Information, and you can see all of the great stuff that we have going on. We have early voting starting in person on Saturday, the 21st, Trump, sorry, 22nd of August. There it is. Early voting in person is one of three ways that you can vote this year. So you can vote through the mail, which are those pieces of paper that we've processed over the last month. The last day that you can apply for an early vote or absentee ballot by mail will be August the 26th. The last day to apply in person, which is really the same thing, is, it says August the 31st, but we really are not open other than by appointment for, for people to stop in. And it has been, it's been one of those situations where you can apply in person by going to early voting, which starts on August the 22nd, at the Barnstable Adult Community Center. We will be there on Saturday and Sunday from 8:00 AM till 1:00 PM, and then we'll be there the following Monday through Friday from 8:30 in the morning till 4:30 PM. And I want you to understand that we're trying to do this so that we keep everyone safe. So we will only allow six people at a time in the voting area. We will be cleaning the polling location after each voter votes. We're going to clean off the actual desk area. We'll, we'll clean the pens. We have, we have police to be there with us inside and outside to help. We're asking everyone to wear a mask. We will all have masks on and probably face shields at the same time. It's, you know, it's, we're trying to do whatever we can to keep it sanitized and keep it safe for everyone. After, other than that, you can still vote on September 1st in your local polling location. Polling locations have not, have not changed. We're, we're still in the same locations that we have been all along, all 13 precincts. We'll be there from 7:00 AM till 8:00 PM, so that you can come in and cast your ballot. Again, we will have people sanitizing the voting booths and the, and the pens. We'll have gloves, we'll have masks, we'll have everything available for you and for the, the election workers. Now, there's been a lot of talk about mailing back the ballots to us, and we are starting to receive them. I will tell you, we're receiving them now in great big boxes we're getting from the post offices. If you feel uncomfortable with mailing your ballot back, please feel free to drop your ballot off. And in our ballot box, which is outside of Town Hall on the top step, it's a secured, locked box. We check it several times during the day. It's, it fills up. We've, we've had quite a few come through there, which is great. You can still mail it back. It's a free mail back for you. You don't have to put a stamp on it. But you have to make sure that you've signed that inside envelope before you mail it back, because without your signature on that ballot envelope, I can't accept your ballot. So I want to make sure that I've made that very clear to everyone. Please put that, please sign that. Also, during early voting, if you choose to drop your ballot off at the Barnstable Adult Community Center, I can accept them during early voting. We cannot accept them at the polling location, and the reason why is they have to be date and timestamp that, that envelope that you sign has to be date and timestamp with my stamp here at the town clerk's office. So if you bring them in during early voting, we will take them back to the office, and we will date and timestamp them when we get back to the office. I think that's pretty clear. I can't think of anything else. Unless someone has a question, please ask me. Jessica.
I don't have a question, but I think it's pretty cool that you can track your ballot. You can, you can go on the Secretary of State's site, put your name and address, and it'll tell you when you mailed it out to me.
Yes.
And when you received it from me, which I think is awesome. I think that's great. Thank you, Ann, for everything you do.
Thank you. That's working really well. I'm very pleased for that.
Council Schalise.
Thank you very much, President Hebert. And I would like to know, this is a question I've been asked, if someone requests a mail-in ballot, but then they later decide they feel comfortable to go vote in person, may they still vote in person, or have they committed to voting by mail?
It's very interesting that you ask that. Actually, if they've, if they do it by mail, and they have not mailed it back to me or brought it to the BA, the Barnstable Adult Community Center to, to me, then they have not voted yet. So they can, in fact, go to the polling location on, on the 1st of September and cast their ballot.
Thank you, and thank you so much for all your hard work. My final question for you: Do you have enough help?
You know, it's amazing, because we've gotten the word out, we've had a lot of people contact us, get in touch with HR and become poll workers, so I think we're doing pretty well right now. I have, I have something out to all of my wardens to tell me if they need anyone else so that we can get the last push through.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Snapp, please.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Ann. I know you and your staff have been working very hard to make this all happen. Just as a, one example, if somebody requested a mail-in ballot, and they just took a little bit of time and realized that they couldn't mail that in, all the other options for delivering it were gone, except for that lockbox, Town Hall, what's the deadline for them to drop it off in that lockbox?
7:59 p.m. on the 1st of September.
Okay, great. And just a follow-up, and I know we talked about the location of that lockbox. It's currently up a couple steps and I would hope that we might find some way to make it as accessible as possible just because you just never know who's going to need to drop that ballot off at the last minute.
Paul, I do appreciate that. And the reason why it's there is it's a secure location and it's not, you know, we have cameras and all kinds of good stuff, so it's really a secure location. But I do appreciate what you're saying and if there's any way we can do that in the future, I'm sure we will. We have had people call and ask how would we handle it for them? They can't get up the steps. They can just call us and we'll run out and get their ballot for them.
Madam Clerk, could they also put it in the tax collector's box?
Yes, it works fine. They've done that too, yes.
Because there's no steps there, it's just on the sidewalk.
That's true.
Just a thought, thank you. Counselor Bogdan, did you have a question?
Actually, I did have a comment, but I didn't even realize I had my hand up, but you must have, like, by telepathy realized that I wanted to make a comment. And that is that I have always found Ann and Janet and their staff to be delightful and a pleasure with whom to work. And I think this evening and your jovial spirit epitomizes that because these are trying circumstances and if it were up to me, I would do my best to get you hazardous duty pay. So I commend you.
Thank you very much.
Any other counselors' questions for Madam Clerk?
Mark Els.
Mark Els, please.
Thank you. To Paula Schnapp's question, Ann, Dan Santos and Steve Sunderland already met today on it, so they're going to chat with you tomorrow.
Oh, great.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? Ann, thank you so much for staying up late. Maybe you worked till now, I don't know.
Well, you know, it gave me the opportunity to put a few more of those in that computer behind me, so it's all good.
Whenever I look into your office, I think I'm looking at early Christmas. It looks like Santa's workshop. Nicely done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll continue with my manager's update.
Thank you.
Okay. Mark Els again, town manager. We continue to conservatively manage the FY 2021 budget carefully, monitoring revenues and expenses. We're maintaining the necessary controls to respond appropriately as we progress through this FY 2021. Mark Mills, Finance Director, and I are planning for a fiscal policy workshop and I've attached the summary that I had previously sent to you. We're hoping to do that in September and we're also looking forward to the strategic planning session that you've scheduled for September 12th. And all of our budget information is easily accessed on our town website. As a reminder, the town of Barnstable continues to follow the order and directives of our governor. We're in Phase 3, Step 1 of the governor's four-phase recovery plan. And within that, we are required to adhere to proper social distancing and if we cannot to wear face masks or face covering. The governor has updated his orders and directives, therefore I encourage everybody to go to the mass.gov covid website or to our town of Barnstable website and read these orders and directives. I know I say this every time, but at times daily, our public calls and has heard something and somebody told them or a business calls and is trying to get clarification and I will try to answer their question as our staff does, but I always direct them to these websites and I encourage them to read for themselves because there's a tremendous amount of detail there and each situation is different, if you can believe that. And it's important that they read these for themselves. One noteworthy cancellation is that the fireworks that had been rescheduled from July 4th to Labor Day weekend have been canceled because these activities are still not allowed, probably won't be allowed and hopefully will be into Phase 4 by next Fourth of July. But at this time, we won't be able to proceed on Labor Day weekend. And I thank everybody for continuing to adhere to these requirements. The school superintendent and I communicate daily regarding community issues and specifically the current plan for school year 2021. On August 14th, Barnstable Public Schools submitted the fall reopening plan to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The plan in its entirety is available on the Barnstable Public Schools website. The 2021 school calendar represents phased-in reopening, and I'll just give a brief summary as follows. School staff begins on August 31st. Students begin September 16th with remote learning until September 25th. Students begin in-person learning on September 28th, depending on the cohort that they're in, and I'd encourage you all to go in and take a look at the plan. I've also attached a one-pager, but more importantly, you know, a short document that summarizes the plan that was submitted, you know, with my town manager communication today, so certainly you can all take a look at that. But you got to know which cohort you're in so you know which days you would be going in in person. But that will be reduced hours up through September 28th, meaning basically half-days, four-hour days. Students begin full implementation of in-person learning on October 13th, so that would mean full days on October 13th. The superintendent continues to provide weekly video updates to our Barnstable Public Schools community. All updates are available on the Barnstable Public Schools website. On Monday, August 24th, parents and guardians will receive their child's cohort assignments. Assignments are based on the family survey that resulted in 76% response. Non-responders were assigned in-person by default. At this time, 960 students are identified for remote learning and 3,953 students are identified for in-person learning. I've attached the Barnstable Public Schools reopening plan and tentative 2021 calendar, again, for your review. In addition, we, we, meaning your municipal staff, are meeting with our school department to ensure that our youth programming is well-coordinated and effective in our continued efforts to offer safe programming for our youth in Barnstable. What I mean by that is our staff, primarily our community services staff, is meeting directly with the superintendent so that we can make sure that during these remote learning times, because when you look at the model that the school has submitted, it is still holding with the elementary grades in class, in person, and the grade four through 12 are in a hybrid mode. And so, meaning some in-person, some remote. So what we want to make sure that we do is create opportunities for our youth when they are in that remote mode to be able to have constructive learning going on and to have activities that are safe and that are monitored so that we can allow our students to be successful and we can allow our parents to get back to work, to get back to life. And so many of our facilities are going to open on a limited basis under the controls of the directives and orders of our governor and in some cases, won't be reopening right away or not going back to normal operation right away. So if we can work with our schools to make sure that we're utilizing those facilities and that staff to offer programming to our youth so that they are able to, for example, have stations at one of, perhaps at the Youth and Community Center where they can go in a controlled manner, have access to computers, be able to use that time for constructive learning that's under the supervision and coordination of our schools, we're looking at how we can offer that. So we are having these conversations daily with our school department. So not only are they trying to go back to the model that they, the plan that they've submitted to the state, but we are trying to augment to keep our community moving forward during this difficult time and we'll keep you advised as we move forward with this important effort. I wanted to share some of the feedback with you received from parents whose children attended the All-Day Summer Fun Club, and it was great to hear from y'all and the public about their, how happy they are with the programs and services, certainly that our Youth and Community Center and our Community Services Department are offering to our community. But I had said earlier on, as we planned for this back in May, it would have been easy to say, you know what, there's a bunch of orders and directives that are out there that aren't going to allow us to offer the leisure program, the summer leisure program for our kids that we've offered for years. We have 400 kids this summer that come to us at various locations and are busy five days a week, six or seven weeks of the summer. A great experience from young ages all the way up through, you know, through seventh grade. And it would have been easy to say, oh, we can't do it this year, but our staff didn't. Our staff said, let's figure out how to do this. It's about the kids and then it's about our community. And they did it. Over the past six weeks, 92 children attended the program to enjoy the much-needed summer fun and good times with their peers across, we used three sites this summer. We received, you know, the parent feedback was a 9.8 out of 10. And the comments we received expressed the gratitude our families felt that our community was able to offer the program this summer. I must commend the staff for their extraordinary efforts, in particular Mickey Davies and her team of counselors, who in addition to providing a fun, engaging environment each day, were responsible for ensuring the safety and well-being of our participants during this pandemic. Although this was a very different experience than we provided in the past, our kids quickly adapted to the safety requirements and had fun in the process. Our staff is approaching the coordinated youth programming with our schools for this upcoming school year with the same positive attitude. It's not a question of will we do it, but rather how will we do it? I commend our staff for this approach to this very challenging situation and will keep you advised as we progress on this youth program. We continue with our regular conversations with Vineyard Wind regarding the status of Phase 1 and Phase 2 projects. Vineyard Wind continues to work with Barnstable staff regarding both phases of the project. They anticipate commencing construction of Phase 1 in the spring of '21 and are proceeding with permitting of Phase 2. The resolve this evening, on this evening's agenda is one of the items needed to authorize us as we move forward, we're preparing for the construction of Phase 1. So it'll be discussed later. Attorney McLaughlin will give the overview for that. The town council appointed the town manager as representative on the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Board. The Bylaws and Regulations Subcommittee met on August 5th. We approved draft regulations and forwarded them to the board for consideration. The full board has its next meeting scheduled for September 9th, 2020, at 4:00 p.m. These regulations, we've already done the bylaws, the regulations are specific to how the board will distribute funds that come over from the state to the board for specific wastewater projects. So this is an important step in allowing the board to move forward with this very important funding opportunity relevant to wastewater across Cape Cod. So we were pleased to report out to the full board that we had these draft regulations completed. I was able to serve as chair of this subcommittee and it was a great working relationship we had with communities across Cape Cod. All this information can be found on the Cape Cod Commission's website and I provide that link to each of you in my communication. I'll stop here with my report. We will close with Dan Santos, Director of Public Works, providing an update on the comprehensive wastewater management plan. But if you have any questions relevant to my update, be more than happy to answer. Yes, Jen?
Thank you. I just wanted to commend the staff at the HYCC. Dante's been a member of that particular recreation program since he could, since he was five, I think. And it was a big loss this summer that we didn't have it, but I'm really happy to see that we figured out a way to help 92 kids out of the summer doldrums. I will say that now, being 12, he has a little bit more independence than he's had in the past and the skate park has been an absolutely awesome outlet for him this whole summer. It's been really great and it's awesome that it's staffed. He goes there with his buddies a couple of times a week. He's learned a lot of new ways to be brave and he's really, really had some great experiences there. I also wanted to make sure I mention that I really appreciate this dovetailed approach with education and support programs for kids and parents getting back to work. It's been a really rocky road since March for a lot of us, being parents and needing to support kids and then needing to support the family. And I don't need to sing the song, everybody's heard it a thousand times, but just the idea of the town helping in whatever way a municipality can bolster a school's efforts is a really great thing and I'm proud to be a part of a town that would consider that instead of just each one hanging the other out to dry. So thank you for all your efforts and please pass it along.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Colin. Counselor Levesque, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark, for your report. And I appreciate, it was something that I was, I didn't want to go too far on my response to public comment, but that was definitely something that was on my mind and I saw it in your report in regards to, again, kudos to the department, Madala Noonan, Patty Machado, Mark Fordly, everybody, you know, George Noonan and everybody involved over at John Gleason, of course, at the Rec Department, getting that done and again, in a safe way in a way that, again, helped, you know, a lot of these kids that have come into the place and you know, have spent some time there, they're at risk and they don't have other places to go and otherwise they'd be home and left to their own, you know, have to try to take care of themselves during the day. So I really appreciate the effort that went to get those 92 kids in that program. Can, I know Governor Baker allowed hockey to now take place in the town of Barnstable, so I just had a, that was my first question, is what's the plan as far as the HYCC moving forward in regards to either using one rink or both? And is there a timetable on that?
Yes, there is. I'll qualify anything I say by saying it's tentative at this point for us and obviously subject to changes which are occurring regularly as far as those orders and directives. But at this point, we're looking to bring up at least one sheet of ice in the month of September. The second sheet will depend on a lot of different factors, primary factor being what is best for our community and the youth of our community. And though hockey and all sports are a critical part of that, if we need to look at other uses that may benefit a larger number of our youth, we may end up utilizing, we're going to bring up the Kennedy, but I don't know about the Butler yet. We got to make that decision and we'll be making it very quickly, I mean, within days.
Great. And that you led right up into my follow-up and that's honestly, one sheet, if that fits the need, then I would agree, let's go that direction because Butler being a concrete floor, I could see that being very much an open-air classroom type of area where we, you know, there's lots of things that could happen moving forward. The governor has said he'd like to see kids go back to school. I appreciate the work that Superintendent Meg Mayo Brown is moving forward with this hybrid and the younger grades going in more often. I would support her fighting, continue to fight for that. And again, because fighting for our, these really is about, the science supports that they can go back to school. And the food insecurity that's taking place, I've spent a lot of my time I've spent a lot of my time, and again, I'm not, this is going to pat myself on the back, but it's been a passion of mine that this food insecurity issue, and I've spent a lot of my time during this COVID crisis, volunteering at the HYCC, through the Faith Family Kitchen, Mass Military Support Foundation. There's a need out there, there is food insecurity there. And this will only be enhanced. And it's great that we have bus pickups. We've done everything probably humanly possible. But the problem is if people aren't going and picking up the food at HYCC, the schools, the bus stops, whatever it may be, these kids aren't eating. And so, and we have that over 50% in our school department. So there's a, there's a lot of risk that's going to take place. And I know I'm kind of rambling a little bit, but at the same time, I think it's very important for it to be said that there's more issues that are going to take place in our youth if they don't go back to school than if they do go back to school. So I would hope that things aren't, you know, and if the teachers go on strike because Superintendent Meg Mayo Brown is moving forward, then we need to be ready. And the HYCC would be a great spot to be able to take care of these kids. And at the same time, I, and I think other people in the community would rise to the occasion, try to fill in the void if that, if that does happen. And I would do, and I would be a part of any solution that you see fit moving forward to make sure that, again, not only the at-risk youth, but our youth in our town have some place to go. And they don't need to be alone while mom and dad are trying to support their family in this crisis. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, in general, to respond, I think that the superintendent and I are safety first for our youth, for our employees, for our public. And that, that's been a priority for us. And then certainly, secondly, you know, getting back to those fundamental programs and services in any and all of those areas. So I see no deviation from that. I have only received support from all of the staff in the town of Barnstable in working with us to try to get to that point. So I don't know, I don't have some of the other concerns that you had shared with us. I do see the controls that are necessary to be successful as a tremendous challenge. Even when you think of something simple as going into the Youth and Community Center, you know, we're really going to have to look at if we're using part of it for our youth and part of it for hockey, we're going to have to look at perhaps separating those entrances and not using locker rooms. Because as you begin to bring even small groups of people into closer confines, we begin to lose our controls which could jeopardize the entire facility. So I can't, you know, and the schools, think about that for almost 5,000 students. We're dealing with, you know, dozens, not thousands. So think about how complicated that will be in keeping the necessary controls in place to be able to not have some sort of spike that causes us not to be able to proceed with the programs. But these are the types of discussions that we're having daily. And, and, you know, right down through, from myself all the way down through the ranks of the staff, you know, to the people that you were referencing, Matt, that are doing boots on the ground, offering these programs to our kids. So we're doing everything we can, we will continue to, and we'll keep you advised. And I hope we don't hit too many bumps because it's coming quick.
And just a quick response to that, Mark, in no way, shape, or form was that a challenge or anything like that? If anything, it was a vote of confidence in all the work that your staff is doing to move forward. And I know that, you know, you're thinking of any possible way to think outside of the box, so to speak, to provide for our youth in this time. And that it, you know, obviously is safety first, I couldn't agree with you more. You don't want to do something else and risk something else at the same time. It's got to be a good balance. So in no way, shape, or form was I challenging or anything like that, but I just wanted to voice, you know, my support.
Thank you. No, no, I didn't, didn't take it as a challenge, just, you know, we have to hold with those clear, clear focal points as to what we're trying to achieve. And certainly the two that I referenced are, you know, our priorities.
I couldn't agree more. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions for the town manager? Councilor Neary, please.
Thank you, President. Managerial, I just have a question. We've spoken about this prior with the Water Protection Fund. I know that the, you mentioned that the regulations have just kind of, the beginning phases on how it's going to be doled out. With that said, the money I'm sure is accruing. Is there an idea of how much money is sitting in that fund currently?
I have, I have heard $9 million range at this point, but I don't know for sure. And that number may be several months old at this point. So I, we are going to have that meeting, you know, in September. And when we do, one of the, you know, two of the things that we've asked to be done is number one, go back over the legislation so everybody understands the intent. And number two, give an update on your question, which is, how much money are we talking about? What have we seen so far? Very difficult and certainly Director Milne can share that with you at some point. But very difficult to predict what revenues will be right now because there's a lot of new variables that we're managing. But that'll be, you know, set the stage for the discussion that the board will have about how to administer these regulations in these funds. But off the top of my head, I remember around $9 million.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm sorry. Councilor Dagewell, please.
Just wanted to say that I feel that your emphasis on the town's emphasis and the school's emphasis on protecting the children coming back to school. I would.
Councilor Dagewell, we're having a hard time to hear you. Can you try to speak more directly into the mic?
Can you hear me better?
Yeah, but you.
Can you hear me better?
Yeah.
I'm trying to get as close as I can.
Okay.
I just wanted to speak to the fact of protecting the children and the child that are coming back to school, the emphasis that everybody's putting on that. I went for a, offered on for a shelter here in town. And we have been quarantining new residents when they come to the shelter. And recently, one of the residents who finished her quarantine made a mistake by going to a non-essential place and ended up being infected. And as a result of that, we had to evacuate the shelter. I was one of the individuals that was exposed. So I've been quarantined for quite a bit of time. I'm off the quarantine line because I came to contact with someone who had the COVID from the shelter. And so I just wanted to emphasize to people the importance of following the directors of the governor, social distancing, how strict that is, being washing, wearing the mask, and sticking with those, with those directors. Because it only takes one person, and that's what happened with the shelter, just one person to decide to do something that caused a lot of panic for the other members of the shelter. And so I just kudos to the governor and kudos to those in the town who continue to push and emphasize following the governor's directors.
Thank you, Councilor Dagewell. And maybe I said the wrong thing, maybe it was to get farther away from the mic, I'm not sure. I'm no technician. Mark, did you hear enough of that to get the gist of problems with COVID at this, at the shelter?
I did, I did. And I think it just reinforces what I said about having the proper controls in place, following, following those protocols that are being shared with us, not only in our state or, you know, more broadly represented to us by various agencies, but certainly the ones that the town and our, and within the town, our schools and our, and our Community Services Department are offering to the participants in our programs. It's critical. If we're going to be able to move forward, we got to keep these controls in place. They have to be adhered to. When, when we, when we see something occur, we have to move immediately into managing that situation so that we don't have a widespread spike and therefore jeopardize whether it's education or recreation or general life for us. So again, I thank everybody for being attentive to that, taking personal responsibility. And you'll just hear me recite this over and over again until we're done. So, thank you.
If I could interrupt for a second. Councilor Dagewell, can you try logging off and logging back in and see if we can get you a better connection? Because your audio is breaking up quite a bit.
Councilor Dagewell, did you hear that? They were suggesting that you would sign out and sign back in.
Yes, I'm in the process of doing that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
And before I sign off, I just wanted to say to Mark that the shelter had been, and contacted, and consistently contacted the governor and his director. And they had all of us tested. And my test came back negative. I'm in good condition. And we're going to sign off.
And we're happy that you were negative. Very good. Thank you. Come back to us. Okay. If there's no other questions for the town manager, we're going to go to Director Santos.
Good evening again. Dan Santos, Republic Works. I'm going to share my screen with you all. And this is an update on the CWMP wastewater effort in Barnstable since July through May. On the comprehensive wastewater management plan, we are continuing the development of the environmental impact report. As you may recall, this was the major requirement of the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act certificate that we received in March after we submitted our CWMP. They basically review that and tell you what they're going to need to see to complete that effort. And we expected this because of the size of this project and environmental impact report we applied. That work is underway, primarily in-house. We have some consultant work going on with that as well. We met with the Mass Environmental Policy Act Office last week. We've also met with DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection. These are both requirements, again, of that certificate. And we are doing additional modeling with UMass Dartmouth School of Marine Science and Technology, who did our nutrient modeling to make sure that the plan that we had proposed was actually going to meet the requirements in the water bodies, in the estuaries. And so that's being finalized. You know, we expect to submit this EIR document in October. As far as projects go, the Route 28 East Project, which is the major pump station at the intersection of Finney's Lane and Route 28, and then searing main back to the Tritna Plant in Hyannis, as well as searing in the Finney's Lane area. We met with Mast Dot, obviously Route 28 being a mass highway, not a town or Barnstable Road, that we have to work very closely with them in this project. Our preliminary design continues and we hope to start this project a little over a year from now in next fall, or probably November, December of 2021. On the Long Pond, Finney's Lane and Route 28 to Route 149 project, as I mentioned last month, our survey work is underway. And that's a very significant effort to look at all of the geographic issues and situation throughout the whole extent of these projects. We have notified property owners directly that we will be in, near their property and also that we will be in their neighborhood. And we've got their number of questions about that. And that work will be done in March. On the Strawberry Hill Road project, this is the project that is being done in conjunction with the work that Vineyard Wind is working on from Poville's Beach all the way up into Independent Park, where we'll be putting sewer in the road as they do their duck bank work. And that design work continues. And our annual estuary monitoring sampling effort, which we do every year, is underway for the summer. On the Joint Base Cape Cod, just a quick note that, haven't heard anything further. We've had some conversations with our partner, but the Department of Defense has pretty much been silent on where they are with this. So I don't have anything further to report on that. Recently, we received from the Conservation Law Foundation a notice of intent to file suit. And this notice of intent alleges that the town is violating the Clean Water Act by discharging effluent from the wastewater treatment plant into Lewis Bay, which is a navigable water of the US, without a national pollutant discharge elimination scheme permit, which is also known as a NEPTI's permit, from the EPA. Traditionally, these have been issued by the EPA to regulate direct discharges to surface water, so outfall pipe into coastal areas or where they're mostly used in this country is in rivers. A recent Supreme Court decision found that NEPTI's permits are needed for discharges that are functional equivalent of a direct discharge. What that means is that the particular conditions of a site mean that even though you're directing your discharge of effluent to the ground surface, it's making its way almost directly to a water. The Water Pollution Control Facility in Hyannis does not directly discharge to Lewis Bay or any water body. It currently discharges to rapid infiltration beds on-site. And as a result, it has been regulated by DEP under a groundwater discharge permit. And it's important to note that the town is in complete and full compliance with a current required groundwater discharge permit. And that's my summary of activities for the month of July and August. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Santos, for that presentation. Any questions, discussion, comments from, okay, Councilor Levesque, please.
Has there been any response to, thank you, Mr. President, sorry about that. Is there any response back from CLF in regards to the lawsuit or the threatened lawsuit? Now, are we just in communication with them at this point?
What I'm going to do is refer any questions of this nature to Karen Nobre. I think because it is technically litigation.
Evening. We have not yet been in touch with CLF. We are evaluating our options and I think further discussions regarding this lawsuit would take place in executive session.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for your hard work, Dan.
Thank you, Councilor Levesque. Councilor Snapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dan, for the presentation. I recall in previous reports, probably over a year or two ago, some discussions about studying the capacity of our water control pollution facility and also trying to identify other places for effluent to be discharged. Is there any progress on those fronts in terms of just understanding where we're at with that?
Yes, thank you. That work is being primarily conducted with consultants that we hired. And we have made our most progress. And we have made our most progress right now with the capacity you speak of is the ability to dispose of effluent at the site. We have a large capacity at the plant, much larger than we do for the ability to dispose of effluent. So that's why we're undertaking that study. And we have received a preliminary report from CDM Smith, who's doing that work. We're working through that now, and we hope to have some results to share with you in the next couple of months. That's going to address what the current capacity is, we think, beyond that which was previously identified from some preliminary work. And also have underway looking at alternative sites, but we really needed to understand how much effluent we needed to get rid of effectively off the site before we really dug into that effort. So definitely underway, and we'll have some results of that in the near future.
Okay. Not actually a follow-up, but a question on the other side of town. Has there been any further progress on the dredging of Mill Pond?
We are, we have provided information to a number of regulatory agencies in the state on that. We've continued to talk to them, and they are, they're considering and evaluating our proposals. The indications from them, I would say, are more positive than negative. They seem to be much more interested now than they have in the past for this. So I'm hopeful for that, and we will continue to work with them to try to get a positive answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Snapp. Counselor, Counselor Star, please.
Good evening, Dan. My question is that the wastewater management plan, help me understand, is it, and the modeling you've done with CMAS, is the 30-year plan, is that based on the construction and that we have now with the nitrogen that we're putting into the water right now? Or does it include future build-out?
It includes build-out.
With build-out?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Star. Counselor Shaughnessy, you had a question?
I didn't put my hand up yet, but I'm happy to speak. Director Santos, there was a little ripple of excitement on Winter Street recently. There was quite a bit of surveying going on. I've been asked at least a half a dozen times now, are we getting new sidewalks? Are our atrophied drains, AKA potholes? Are there improvements coming our way?
Yes. We are, that's what the surveying and work is out there. What we're doing right now is getting a sense of the entire scope of the issues on Winter Street. We're hoping we have budget in our road appropriation to undertake that entire project in the spring, and that would include the road surface drainage and sidewalk. It's still under evaluation, but we are moving in the direction of having that occur.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shaughnessy. Counselor Neary, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. Director Santos, has there been any additional information that's come out of Joint Base Cape Cod?
As I mentioned earlier, we have been in touch with our partners on the project, and the indication from the OD and the guard is they're still evaluating the proposals. I suspect that the COVID pandemic really has focused on their things right now.
Okay.
We hope to hear soon. I mean, it was really their urgency that we were working under, and they wanted to start for October 1st of this year, but I don't see that happening, given where we are right now, that being, you know, less than two months away.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Neary. Madam Vice President, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dan, for the update. And I was curious too about JBCC. It's interesting that an item that we have on the agenda that came on the agenda for the 8.5 million for the upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant, I'm sure that was planned. It just seems that it came right on the heels of, you know, threat by CLF. So I'm glad to see that. It's going to be a little concerning, though, I'm sure, to the rate payers when they learn of the increase in rates to foot that bill. But as usual, I'd appreciate a copy of your presentation. Thank you.
Absolutely. We have been planning for this project, for our solid handling for a number of years. Our rate model that we undertake in the fall had this firmly in place as a project, and our rates this year and moving forward have addressed this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Looking for any other comments, questions. Seeing Dan, Director Santos, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. And all right, thank you very much. So we will now move to, just to let you know, our logistics. Approximately 8 o'clock, we are going to take a break. If you are always sitting here needing a short break, 10 minutes. And also, if there's anything, if I miss you, I don't see you, please, you know, could be looking at the next item, just speak up, just say, Mr. President, Mr. Chair. And when we're into items, a point of order, it's very, very important that we stop anything that's going in the wrong direction, clarify, move forward appropriately. So that being said, I will now ask Madam Vice President, please act on the minutes.
Yes, Mr. President. I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes of July 16, 2020, as presented.
Second.
Third.
Or the first and a second. Madam Clerk, we have a roll call on that, please.
Counselors. Bogan?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagewen?
Deborah. Deborah. Roll call.
Ralph Crisetti?
Yes.
Seabird?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Knapp?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Dagewen?
Counselor Dagewen, can you hear us? Counselor Dagewen, we're voting to approve the minutes. Deborah, can you hear us? Counselor Dagewen? We're doing the minutes. Okay. We're just going to skip that for now, see what happens. Okay. So while we're talking about minutes, this would traditionally be by the counselor that represents the concerned citizen. But regrettably, this is in Precinct Four, and as we all know, Counselor Beedenbender has resigned. So I will fill in for Counselor Beedenbender. What transpired on June 4th at that meeting, there was some comments made by people at public comment, and we approved them on the minutes, we approved the minutes on June 18th for the four. And it would have been impossible for any counselor to pick up on discrepancy, but they have been trying to correct it. So we're going to correct it tonight. I'm just going to read what it is that they wanted corrected, and then I will provide this to Madam Clerk, so that she can attach it to the minutes of tonight. This is from Ann Schulte. She feels that she was misrepresented in her minutes, and so she wanted this correction. After asking several questions about the nuisance-style complaint system being recommended by the Planning Department, to which she received no response from the counselors, Mrs. Schulte implored the council to take the time to reach out to civic associations and the Barnstable Watch to figure out what we all do have in common and what can be done to recognize all sides of the issue. And then Mr. Bob Schulte would like this to correct what was in the minutes reported for the June 4th meeting. Mr. Schulte asked the council the question, "In light of the COVID-19 crisis, will Barnstable be as forward-thinking as other Cape Towns and solicit input from the officials and residents on what would be an appropriate minimum length of stay for STIs, e.g. seven, 14, or 28 days this summer?", question mark, to which he did not receive a response from any of the councils. So again, this is just to make a correction on that, so we stand corrected. And so I ask the councils if we can accept this and that will straighten out that issue. For practice, can we do another roll call on that? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Cullum? Counselors? Cullum?
Yes.
Dagewen? Ralph Crisetti?
I'm confused on what I'm voting on. I'm sorry. I didn't hear a second, and I have concerns with changing minutes without seeing them. So I'm abstaining at this point.
So should, did we need a first and second? Let's go back, let's not do it if it's incorrect.
Just a point of order, Mr. President. I missed that as well, too. I'm not sure what we're, what are we, what are we talking about here? Apologize.
Okay. So this is my understanding. Hopefully, the legal department's listening, and they can maybe help us out with this. There was, there was on the minutes of June 4th, apparently the opposite or how it was represented in the comments, and I was not aware that we took that close, that we put comments in the minutes from the public usually. I think that would be very difficult for a clerk to do. By any event, so these two residents said that they were misquoted in the comments. I don't think they would have minded so much if they were quoted, but they felt they were misquoted. So they have been asking the clerk to change those minutes. Our clerk clearly stated that that's not the job of the clerk. The clerk cannot go and change the minutes because it was approved by we, the counselors. So the only way to get a change would be normally for a counselor to report that and to try to get that repaired. So I saw the document, I saw the request. I said, "Let's do something about it. If they would be satisfied," that I would read this tonight, which I just did, and that the counselors would then approve it. So.
Point of information, why don't we, why don't we review the June 4th notes and re-vote on this?
Would that be your preference? Okay.
I think so, yeah.
All right.
Point of information, you've read it into this meeting, so now it's part of these minutes anyway.
Okay.
So we can approve it at the next meeting. I don't know that we need to go back and amend something because you just put the information in that they wanted in this meeting.
I would think that'd be the simplest way. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could hear from the clerk as far as minute-taking and how the clerk puts in what she puts into the minutes, please.
Yes, minute-taking is not what was said, basically, is what is done. That is Robert's rules. So we do take comment, public comment, especially on issues that people talk about, and I present them, I write them up according to what I hear from at the meeting, and I present them to the council.
Thank you.
If there's no other comments, I appreciate Counselor Stein Hilber's suggestion. We can approve it at the next meeting. It's been written in. That would save going back to June 4th. That was not my intention, go back to June 4th. It was to satisfy the public that they were recording. Okay? So let go of that. This is any comments. Counselor Bogan? Counselor Bogan?
Sorry, Mr. President. I was not raising my hand. Just moving.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your assistance in this matter. Let's go on to communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Counselor Star, please.
Okay. Good evening. I'm reporting from the Infrastructure and Energy Committee. The Infrastructure and Energy Committee is supporting a climate resolution that would include a statement that the town council, a sort of a resolution or a statement that says that we agree that there is a climate, there is climate change, and it's an important issue, and we should look at town policy through the lens of climate change. So it's a group of Barnstable citizens who are putting this forward, the committee supporting them, and we will put it on the agenda in a future meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Star. Thank you. Any other counselors for communication? Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Hebert. I'm happy to report that Wednesday morning, the Council on Aging was able to meet via Zoom remotely for the first time since February. We were overdue to appoint a new chair, so the new chair is now John Jope. So proud to congratulate him on that, and we are back on a monthly schedule to meet. I also want to highlight a program that the Barnstable Police Department just announced this week. We've been talking about kids and schools and things to keep them busy, and I saw this announcement this week from the Barnstable Police Department, and I think it's such a great idea. So for an inaugural class, they are starting a police explorers program. This is for children aged 14 to 18. The deadline to apply for the program is August 28th. Having graduated from Citizens Police Academy, I'm sure this program is going to be equally fabulous for the kids. So I just wanted to get that out there to the public. Being the inaugural class, it is going to be a small class, and they anticipate the program will fill up quickly. So if you have a child between the ages of 18, sorry, 14 to 18, you can contact the Barnstable Police Department or go on their website, and they will provide you with an application for the program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Shaughnessy. Excellent. Counselor Levesque, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to bring attention to the good work that the Barnstable Clean Water Coalition is doing with the citizens of Sandy Shores and Evergreen Association here in Precinct 10 in regards to Shubel's Pond and the new septic systems that they're looking to install in some homes there around that area. It's this new technology could possibly really help move forward a lot of the pollution that's going into our ponds and causing the cyanobacteria issues that we're having. So and I understand too, and we can have further discussion about it too, that Z Crocker and Jennifer Lawford, that maybe they'd like to come and speak to the council, kind of give them an update on those projects moving forward, maybe sometime in September or October the latest. So obviously can discuss at a later date, but kudos to all the good work they're doing in meeting with the associations and getting that ball rolling. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Levesque. Counselor Snapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to urge counselors to review the
I just wanted to urge councilors to review the report that Mark referenced in his first bullet, the, that Mark Milne has produced on financial fiscal policies that we will need to be kind of wrestling with and some of the important questions. CFAC is also reviewing this document, and they will be issuing a report and commentary about these guidelines before our strategic planning session. So again, definitely look at Mark's report and then want to urge you to look out for the CFAC report that will follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stepp. Two things that I would like to point out is that please, if you haven't already, when we get the survey request for our strategic planning, it's going to Elizabeth Cooper. Please try to get that filled out as quickly as possible and sent back in so that we keep preparing for our strategic plan, planning session. And going on safety first, we have decided that it's all going to be done by Zoom. We won't be meeting together at town hall. So let's set a safety, sorry. The other item that I would like to talk about is the, there's a bill being drafted and is, I believe, still in committee up in Boston regarding police. And I would like councilors to stop thinking about this. I've asked Counselor Lebec to help formulate some type of a response from us as councilors on our police force. There's some, the chief, I've talked to the chief, and he said there's some good things in the bill that might be encouraging on training or on recruiting, but there's maybe one or two elements that are kind of punitive as a result of the unfortunate situation with the video of George Floyd actually being killed. And so the state is going to be working on this. I'm hoping that they're going to ask for public input. I'm going to ask that they, I'm hoping that our delegation is going to talk to us about that bill, so get some input from us. But I think it's important, it's not just in the town of Barnstable, but police officers are discouraged and concerned. So I'd like us to think about how we're going to support our police department. We can be thinking about that. I know that Counselor Lebec may come up with some ideas on how we might approach this issue. And I thank Counselor Lebec for helping on this. Counselor Neary.
Yeah, excuse me, Mr. President. Counselor Dagewone's trying to get in. If Sarah, you could try to help her or assist her, she's trying to call in on her phone now, all right? The computer she is using is not working.
Okay. Can you just help me with the last four for Sarah, so I can make sure I let in the right person?
Absolutely. Last four. Seven, four, nine, five.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Neary, for that. Okay. Are there any other items for communication? Okay. Thank you very much for your participation. So why do we, right now, it is eight oh three. Let's take a ten-minute break and see you all back here at eight, no, it's nine. Am I correct? It's nine oh three. So about nine thirteen, nine fifteen, going to start over again. Okay? And go into the quarters of the day. Thank you.
Counselor Dagewone, are you in now?
We're going to now go into the orders of the day. And what I'd like to do is, there's only one item in all business outside of the two Shatim rental items. I'd like to take here that item right away and then we'll speed through the new business and that will give us a clean slate to go into the item 2020-192. So unless there's any objection, I would like to start off with item number 2021-003. And I would like Counselor Snap to please read that into the record.
This is item 20...
Yes, it is on page 14.
Yes, item 2021-003. It's an item of all business requiring a public hearing and a roll call majority appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $300,000 of community preservation funds for the creation of two moderate income deed restricted two-bedroom apartments at 255 Main Street, Hyannis, Mass.
We have a first and a second. Thank you very much. And who is speaking on the rationale?
I believe you have Mr. Brennan and Mr. Farrell.
Rob Brennan here from Cape Cod Development.
Do we have a sponsor? Do we have a sponsor for this, Cindy? The town manager is recommending it. Okay, Mr. Brennan, why don't you speak to this?
Thank you very much, Counselor Hubert. For the record, my name is Rob Brennan, resident of 97 Pond Street and president of Cape Cod Development. Now, before I start, I just want to thank a few people, starting with Mark Els, Elizabeth Jenkins, Arden Kadron in her office, Brian Florence, his team. Thank you, Council President, for introducing and encouraging us to take on this project. And all the councilors who have taken the time to visit our site, to take a tour of the building in various stages, or to spend time connecting me with me by phone. I also want to thank Deb and Ralph Crowe, who I understand aren't with us tonight. But their education, their friendship and their encouragement for me and my company to put down deep roots in Hyannis is something that I greatly treasure. I have a short deck that I know, having been in the breakout room with a lot of people, I know that there's a lot of discussion to take place tonight. I'm hoping that this is a non-controversial for a number of reasons. Number one, that we're advancing two goals of the Community Preservation Act, both the creation of moderate income affordable housing and historic preservation. Also, this is a project with 10 residential apartments that'll be coming online in Hyannis all of these year-round leases, no subleasing. And that after three meetings and significant vetting, this proposal was unanimously endorsed by the Community Preservation Committee. And it's also support of a development project, both on the historic piece and on the creation of housing piece that I think is going to play a big role in the continued revitalization of East Main Street. So I think Elizabeth Jenkins may have the deck that I want to step through as quickly as we can. But I did want to put all the information in here. This is an important project for us and I want to make sure that all the information is out for the councilors and the public. You can go to the first slide, Elizabeth. Can you click to the next slide? Or scroll, looks like maybe scroll. Yep. So who we are? We are developers of neighborhood developers is what Cape Cod really does. We're a team that brings together unique skillsets to tackle unique challenges of how do we develop attainable housing on Cape Cod? We pride ourselves on three things. You know, listen, we communicate and we value the trust placed in us. Next slide, Elizabeth. Who I am? Rob Brennan, I've gotten to meet most of the councilors and many members of the public, both from our work on my work on various committees and groups here in town. And with some of you volunteer each Friday or each first Friday. And thank you, Counselor Shaughnessy, for introducing me and my family to that, but volunteering at the Barnstable-Dowell Community Center. I come at development from two perspectives. Number one, as 20 years as an attorney representing developers. But number two, as someone that had the benefit of growing up in a very tight-knit community off Cape in Somerville. And if you know anything about Somerville, people will identify and tell you what square they grew up in. And I think that speaks to the great sense of community fabric that I've come to find here in Hyannis, where we've set up shop at 255. And it's one of the big reasons that our family decided to move here and put down our deep roots. Roles I play here locally, I serve on the Barnstable County Economic Development Council. I'm one of the directors representing Cape Cod at the state level, the Board of Directors for the Home Builders and Remodelers Association of Massachusetts, where I also co-chair the Government Affairs Committee. I serve as a director on the Main Street bid, working as part of the Mass Development, Hyannis Transformative Development Initiative, which is a working group that has just completed, I think, our first year. I also was a director, still am, and chaired the Building Committee for FORWARD, which was another project funded by CPC to create housing for adults with autism. 11-year rider of the Mass Challenge, and I mentioned my work at the Adult Community Center already. Next slide, Elizabeth. Quick updates on this East End revitalization. In addition to 255 Main Street, which we're gonna talk about, I wanted to give the quick update that the Sea Captain's Row project construction actually began this past Monday. We are on track for that project, which was approved back in the end of 2017. We are on track for completing that construction to bring the first 46 apartments online by next June or July. And that was a program where the funding for that was just closed last week. And that was Mass Development approved that. So I want to thank them for that support. And the tie between the two is that Mass Development really had an eye on 255 Main Street, not only to see how it would turn out, but really to see where the support from that was coming. And our ability to bring that very close to completion gave Mass Development the final information that it needed to approve the financing for Sea Captain's Row. Next slide, Elizabeth. When that comes online, again, it's going to be a minimum of 46 apartments. There are 60 units approved in total. The second phase will be the last 14, and those will either go apartments, which it really seems where the greatest need is, or if there's desire for residency, either residents at 255, residents at Sea Captain's Row or others to put down deeper roots, we will have the option of creating those as ownership opportunities for families. Next slide. So the quick project overview for 255 Main Street is that this was a full restoration and redevelopment of a building that goes all the way back to 1905 or somewhere thereabouts. The project is, was both a historic renovation and it was bringing 10 units of greatly needed housing into the building and building upon what was there already. Occupancy permit, we should have by the end of the month. And the good news for that is that with this grant, unlike sometimes when grants are made by CPC and come before this board, for projects that are only starting to put together their planning, these units will become ready for occupancy immediately. And in fact, tonight, I think I have at least two of the tenants who are not tenants for the two two-bedroom affordable units, but the market rate units, we have two tenants that I think are still here in attendance. And as I mentioned, the CPC did unanimously endorse the $300,000 to support two moderate income affordable apartments, and those are both two bedrooms, which is rather unique in terms of the affordable units being created through CPC. Next slide, please. So the history of the building goes back to 1905. In 1913, it was already the Hyannis Board of Trade. And something I just wanted to read, this is from the history of Hyannis and Hyannisport. "One of the main purposes that this served at this important intersection of center and Main Street is that it provided a suitable place where matters of general interest may be discussed in a nonpartisan manner." So I think even back in 1913, there was a perceived need for that, and I think that exists today. Our hope is that with 10 units of housing above and a cafe space on the first floor, that 255 Main Street can return and in a way play that role as a place for people to gather, as a place for students from Sturgis or Barnstable High or elsewhere to come for events, be it poetry slams or coffee nights. But in developing this as part of the Main Street revitalization, we really saw this as an opportunity to create that neighborhood anchor and demonstrate what a redeveloped, revitalized East End of Main Street could present and hopefully attract other developers and encourage others to take a look at opportunities to continue adding layers to the rich history that already existed at the East End of Main Street. Next slide. But from 1905, 255 Main Street fell on some hard times. Neglect as any building crosses that 100-year threshold. Next slide. And off the back, there were some rather scabbed-on additions over the years that really didn't do justice to the rich history that the core of the building had. And in redeveloping it, we wanted to do as good a job as we could, bringing it back to its original glory and harmonize the development, the section that had come off the back. Next slide, Elizabeth. The interior conditions were just as horrific. Lots of sagging. The basement and Council President Hubert will may remember when we took a tour of it well over a year ago, but the basement, only half of it was excavated. And the other half, they basically scraped down a little bit and put three courses of brick and called that a foundation wall. And that led to about an eight-inch gap or an eight-inch lean, which in the top right photo, you can actually see where part of the building dropped away, and that's an eight-inch step up to the rest of the building. So it really was at its core, a building that looks like it was engineered in 1900 without a lot of belief, I think, that it was going to last 100 years. But next slide. So when we started planning for the return of 255 Main Street, we went out to groups, including Cape Cod Young Professionals and at their Back to Business Bash for the one year that we participated. We participated three years, but the one year, our focus was what CCYP members and those in attendance wanted to see come back to 255 Main Street. And asking the question, what their Main Street hangout must have. And that was really for the programming of that first floor space. We knew, having worked with them on Sea Captain's Row, what the need was and what their desires were to have attainable housing units come to Main Street where young professionals could make that decision, stay on the Cape, stay in Barnstable, in Hyannis, and take advantage of proximity, take advantage of amenities that they might have at their doorstep moving off Cape to a Providence or a Boston or other metropolitan area. But really, all of that can be found, the Hyannis being the hub of the Cape and having all the recreational, the restaurant and business needs really within walking distance. So that's what we heard. Next slide. We also took it to the streets. We've been a sponsor, a leading sponsor of Hyannis Open Streets for the last two years. And for most of those times, we were out there asking those same questions. What did folks want to see? We then brought down, and we started moving in the direction of a cafe at 255. We brought down a roaster from New Zealand that's going to be bringing his beans for the first time to the Cape. And Main Street is really what we are all about in terms of a vibe for our development and for our company, which is actually going to be located right on the first floor, we're going to have office space. But we took it to the streets and that's where we've listened to. Next slide. We then went out to our architects. We worked with Union Studio. These are builders that are doing work in Falmouth, doing work in Brewster, in Orleans. And these are architects that we originally brought into Cape with our first project in Dennisport. But they, I think, do a good job of understanding how the Cape strikes the balance between honoring its past and preparing and planning for its future. Notably, for three years, from 2013, 16 and 19, Union Studio has won Community of the Year nationally from the National Association of Home Builders. They only give out one of those awards every year among the hundreds and thousands of communities that are developed by home builders throughout the country. In three years, it's been Union Studios. We had the privilege of winning one of those awards with them in 2016 in Dennisport. Next slide. So the program that resulted was for a first floor that was going to be focused on commercial. We have 2,000 square feet of retail cafe space and then 1,000 square feet of office. That office space is already going to be home, not just to Cape Cod, but with one of our tenants who I hope we'll hear from, Bill Farrell. Bill has been leading the movies on Main Street on Friday nights, and he is the executive director of the Hyannis And he is the Executive Director of the Hyannis Film Festival. Bill approached us and was looking to live on, on Main Street. We showed him what was still not under construction. But we also, you know, knowing that the Hyannis Film Festival needs space, we offered up free of charge, you know, space in, in our commercial offices. That's going to have, you know, a, a conference room, you know, facing on to, facing on to Main Street. So I hope, you know, not only the Hyannis Film Festival, but other organizations that are rolling up their sleeves alongside us and investing in the future of Hyannis, that, that they'll take advantage of, of the space that we have as well. Next slide. The two thousand square feet, as I mentioned, is going to be a cafe. Non-Starbucks, non-nationally branded, something organic and unique, you know, to, to Hyannis. We have an experienced team that's done significant work, a hero on, on the Cape and in Hyannis already. That's going to be going in, opening up a cafe with the, the name, you know, tentatively slated as, as Trade, Bakehouse and Brew. Trade, you know, as a name being, paying homage to the historic Hyannis Board of Trade, which was the, the original organization that built and was housed in, in two fifty-five Main Street. Next slide. The second and third floors contain our apartments. And we have a mix of eight one-bedroom apartments and, and two, two-bedroom apartments. And it's the two-bedroom apartments that we're talking about tonight. These are really, you know, the, the gems of the entire project. And, you know, what we see as, as being one of the greatest needs for, you know, for moderate income affordable housing on the Cape. And these typically, you know, the, the one-bedroom apartments are much more common. When we talk about, you know, projects that are receiving, you know, a, a public support. But we did our only two, two bedrooms. And one is unit seven, which you can see in the bottom left. And that's a two-story, so it's a townhouse setup. Living space on the first floor and then bedrooms up on the second floor. And then the unit, what's listed as unit three. And there's actually, you can see off the second floor hallway, there's a separate entrance. So this is a, a dedicated staircase that goes for unit three up to the third floor. And Elizabeth, if you can just mean the next slide. And you'll see unit three is a massive two-bedroom. It spans the entire width of two fifty-five Main. And it provides, you know, phenomenal views looking west, you know, sunset views looking west over the steeple. And then two, you know, two large bedrooms. And then unit seven are the two-bedroom, the two bedrooms for the, the two-bedroom unit with the living space on the first floor. Next slide please. Groundbreaking was April twelfth, two thousand nineteen, which happened to be my birthday. A week later, we were visited by Lieutenant Governor Polito and Secretary of Housing and Economic Development, Mike Keneely. And that's us taking them, taking them through the building. Next slide. And then we went into construction. As I mentioned, the first thing we did was take a little off the back and then we built it back better. And these are our slides. I don't know, I, I hope most have been, had a chance to go through the building very recently. But, you know, the mid-century century addition was removed, new addition rebuilt to better utilize the existing footprint. And again, I think we, we did it in a very historically appropriate manner. Next slide. But so much of the work and so much of the expense at two fifty-five was involved in basically erecting an entire new steel superstructure and taking engineering that was not considered. And originally, all the weight of the building was on its exterior walls. That was failing as it was. And to try to preserve and keep a historic building intact and putting it to new use, it means, you know, doing things above and beyond, you know, what you would even do building this new. So there's an entire new steel superstructure that starts in the basement. You can see in the bottom right, kind of the, the forest of, of steel columns. That steel, you know, carries up through the second floor, which you see in the, in the photos on the left. But then another, you know, added engineering necessity that we discovered only when we got into the project was putting in a series of, of cement buttresses. And you see those in the, in the top right. And I know the counselors who, who I took on a tour through there, there's always something I pointed out because they, they sound like a, a medieval structure. And then when you look at them, they look like medieval structures. They are basically, you know, what is keeping, you know, Main Street from coming into the basement or, you know, the, the driveway at the, at the hotel next door, coming into our basement. So even with all the weight taken off of it, we still had to build those. Next slide. This is all, you know, and, and the reengineering continues all the way up, you know, to the, to the new addition of the top floors. But in taking the opportunity to re-engineer and to bring this property up to twenty twenty standards, we also looked to take advantage of, of what, what infrastructure, you know, was at the front door of two fifty-five in twenty twenty that certainly was not even contemplated and in nineteen oh five. And that included Open Cape. And Open Cape's fiber optic, you know, service was at our front door. And two fifty-five Main Street is actually going to be the first residential property on all of the Cape to bring fiber optic internet into the, every single apartment and at speeds that are, that are really unmatched anywhere. And particularly, and you know, this decision was made, you know, before COVID hit. But, but obviously now, you know, with not only people working, but students, you know, having to spend, you know, time at home, that connectivity is, is all the more important. And to be able to offer that to the residents, including the income qualifying residents that will be coming in and to give them something that no other residential property on Cape Cod offers, I think is a, is a unique, unique opportunity. And we're grateful to the partnership with Open Cape that we struck in that. Next slide. But along the way, stuff happens, as we put. And actually, one day after our first CPC meeting in April, a fifteen-foot section of the original stone, stone foundation collapsed. And that was simply due to utility work and, and truck traffic that was going on next door. Nobody was hurt thankfully. And because, as I mentioned, the steel skeleton on the inside bore all the weight, didn't have any structural impact. But we had to, you know, we then had to now re-engineer a, a fifteen, you know, by twelve-foot patch. And that was, again, it's, it's all, as you can imagine, at, at significant added expense. But it's, it's just part of what, of what happens, we've discovered when you're bringing back a, a building from, from that long ago. Next slide. So all of that, you know, historic redevelopment is, you know, is expensive. And this, the, you know, the, the numbers, you know, we, we vetted, were vetted, you know, at CPC. But I wanted to highlight for the council, you know, costs that are just attributable and this now, you know, included additional foundation costs from the April twenty-ninth, you know, collapse. You know, just unexpected curveballs attributable to historic nature of this project is, you know, is three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. You know, significant investment, significant costs. And that, that truly is the cost of, you know, of historic preservation. You know, at the end of the day, we're, we're very proud of it. But I think this is also one of the reasons why CPC exists, is to support projects like this that will bring, you know, that are done at significant cost. But at the end of the day, you know, bring back to life a, a significant and meaningful historic asset to a community. So, and again, you can see just the cost breakdown, you know, construction, our acquisition easement, design, engineering, permitting, project management. And that doesn't include, you know, all of the, all of the time and investment by, you know, by Cape Bill in this project, doesn't, it doesn't reflect any of our salaries of, of our staff. These are all outside costs. But I can tell you, this, this project has been, for me and, and our general manager, a major focus of what we've been doing, you know, for, for well over a year. Next slide. So why support moderate income affordable housing in Main Street? Because it's important. It's important to have a whole spectrum of, of housing choices. And the Community Preservation Act was written to support affordable housing. And affordable being a relative term, but the Community Preservation Act saying that goes from all the way down, you know, below thirty percent of area median income all the way up to a hundred percent of area median income. And it's, it's written into the act and, you know, it is a, a useful tool that many municipalities have, have accessed. And this has come up, you know, repeatedly in our work with Mass Development. It's also, you know, a best practice, widely cited best practice. And whether that's, you know, Jeff Speck's Walkable City, you know, Charles Marone's Strong Towns, and, and those of you know me know I'm an advocate of that. You know, Charles Montgomery's Happy City. But having a, an array of choices that are, that are supported and having, having that relative affordability, you know, stretch all the way up to folks at the median, which by the way, you know, on, on a family of two earners, that only equates to twenty-one dollars an hour. Certainly those, you know, being folks that, that need support in housing choices, not just during the Cape, but, you know, throughout the Commonwealth. Next, next slide. And I, I wanted to include this just again, you know, to give you a, a, a context, you know, for what it is when we talk about moderate income housing as affordable. You know, I mentioned already, it's, it's acknowledgement of the Community Preservation Act and its availability as a tool. But the family's meeting a hundred percent of AMI. It's, it's town hall employees, it's teachers, it's, you know, it's first responders, hotel and restaurant employees. And it's worth mentioning, I think, that as, as part of this, because, you know, this project was, was conceived and intended, you know, to serve those folks that are, are at the median, those folks that are, you know, that are employed in town hall and teachers. We rolled out in April a program that we called the, the Home Team Program. It was just as, you know, folks really were starting to feel, you know, the long-term impacts and, and economic impacts and then looking at the world ahead from COVID. And we rolled out a program, sending it to Barnstable Police and Fire, to the school department, to the arts community, to the hospital, saying that as, you know, as people were, were considering, you know, where they were going to be for housing and how they were going to, you know, plan for going ahead, encouraging them to look at, look at what we were bringing online. And again, recognizing that folks were taking it on the chin during that time. Offering to people coming from those communities, you know, the arts, first responders, hospital, teachers, one month's free rent. And we, at this point, have four tenants that are coming in through that program. Bill Farrell from the arts, arts community and Chad Smith, who is a new hospital employee as well. So, you know, and, and the way too that, you know, the Community Preservation Act funding works is, you know, is half the money is coming from, from town real estate taxes, as, as I'm sure the full council knows. It's a, it's a, a surcharge that's, that's put on as part of the real estate taxes. But that's matched with state funds. And, and again, I think, you know, the, the taxpayers and, and, you know, I include myself and, and all the folks that were in that, that, that waiting room with me and those that we've met, you know, throughout this entire process. I think it's their expectation and, you know, that the money is going to be used to support housing across the entire spectrum. And certainly, you know, with the state money, I know, you know, that, that being written in the act, I'm, I'm certain that it's a state expectation as well. And I, and I hope that more, you know, projects come. And, and, you know, I know that there's been a, a money dedicated to the trust. But I, I hope that, you know, that projects are entertained, not just at, at low income levels. But, you know, and it certainly is those folks at AMI, you know, that, that support the businesses and that support the restaurants. And, you know, bringing, you know, bringing on folks at, at the entire spectrum is important, particularly in downtimes, whether those downtimes are off-season, you know, for, for Main Street or, you know, as we've learned, you know, so harshly, you know, in, in the midst of a pandemic. But having those folks that live on Main Street and then are supporting the businesses three hundred and sixty-five days a year is a very important investment and it yields significant dividends. So I want to give a look at the two-bedroom apartments. Next slide, just to, for those of you that weren't able to come through or recently. And I know I, I took Counselor Cullen through this morning. And this is our, our unit two oh three. You can see two bedrooms. We created a little home office nook, you know, as well. Again, I think, you know, particularly relevant now with so many people working from home. And this is part of the, the living room, kind of that middle picture in the living room. The nook is, is off to the left from the windows. You know, kitchen dining areas and the, the two bedrooms. And one of the bedrooms, you know, bedroom two certainly, you know, would, could be a, I, I grew up with sisters in a bedroom that was much smaller than that. Next look in as, is unit two oh seven. This is a, the townhouse up-down and you can see the stairs in the kitchen to the right that lead up to the second floor.
Mr. Brennan, I'm going to ask you to try to wrap it up. We have a long night ahead of us.
Absolutely. And I, I'm, I'm at my end, so just click through the last two. I've already made the points about why supporting housing on Main Street is important. And the last slide just shows, you know, that what the mechanics would be for, you know, qualifying families. So again, these are two earners typically, when you talk about a family of three, it presumes two earners and a, and a child. And those earners, you know, would be only making twenty-one dollars an hour. The, the rents indexed, you know, to that income at, at thirty percent of that would come out to twenty-one seventy-three, inclusive of all utilities. And the deed restriction, you know, would be in perpetuity. We are making obviously, you know, in everything that we're doing, not just two fifty-five, but Pleasant Street, a long-term, you know, investment in Main Street. The, the pro forma numbers, you know, are single-digit returns on investment. But we are taking a, a very long look, both as a company, as a family, and believe that there is a rising tide that has been coming in and will continue to come in because of, of all the involvement and participation and support of, of this council and others. And, you know, we are, are willing to put that deed restriction down and, and not realize, you know, the, the rising tide return on those two apartments. But again, because they meet that important need. And I think, you know, that is in, in part, in large part, you know, what justifies the, the support and the investment from the CPC of those funds. So with that, I think, thank you, Mr. Council President, and I'd be happy to answer any, any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Farrell, are you going to, are you giving rationale or are you going to be a part of public comment?
You know, I just lost my Zoom. Can you go to the other person first maybe?
Okay. So what I'm going to do right now is, Counselor Star?
I'm ready to vote.
Well, we, this is open to a public hearing, so I, we need to.
Public hearing?
Yes.
All right, I'm, I'm back.
Okay. And then Sarah, is there anybody in the waiting room that's here to speak on this issue?
Not on this issue, no.
No? Nothing from Lynn, nothing from Sarah. Okay, Mr. Farrell, if you'd like to speak quickly on this, thank you.
Oh, sure. Just that I'm thr- I'm thrilled to be the, the possibility, the inevitability, I hope, of me moving in there in another week or so. I, I'm a writer and an editor by trade, by profession. So I'm especially thrilled about the, about the connectivity there, not to mention just being on Main Street. I moved over here a year and a half ago from Nantucket after thirty years and really wanted to be on Main Street in Hyannis, right in the heart of things, working with Hyannis Film Festival as a co-founder. We've made that our goal to be downtown on Main Street and this fits perfectly with that. I also want to say, you know, as a, I've been in arts and culture groups for a long time, thirty years on Nantucket and have worked with CPC kinds of projects since it was founded in two thousand. On Nantucket, we would have killed for a project like this, a mixed-use project like this. So this is just, I, I think this is really great for downtown Hyannis.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell, appreciate that. So if, if there's nobody else to speak on public comment, then I would like any questions to Mr. Brennan from Counselors. Yes, Counselor Snap, please.
This is probably more of a comment. Rob and I've had a chance to have a conversation. And as many of you know, I'm a very strong advocate for creating affordable units in our community. And historically CPC has not awarded any projects that have gone above eighty percent of area median income. So I, I, I agree that the project is a, a win. So I, I, I agree that the project is a win for, for Hyannis and Main Street in particular. It melds historic and housing in one project, but I remain concerned that we're giving the highest amount per unit, 150,000, and, and only receiving 100%, you know, at 100% AMI. I don't know if these rents, and maybe Rob could answer this, if the rents for these two bedrooms are sort of right at market rate.
Well, thank you for that question. I, I think if you look, the availability of, of, you know, of, of new two-bedroom units in, you know, in Hyannis, there's, there's simply not a supply, right? The, the closest thing we come, you know, is, is Everly with, you know, with their rents, you know, being significantly higher. We have had, you know, inquiries for, specifically for the two bedrooms, people that are looking to relocate, you know, post-COVID from Boston, from Manhattan. We've had inquiries, you know, from, you know, from Nantucket, folks that are looking, you know, to have a, a parking space and a, you know, and a, an apartment on Main Street that go along with that. So, so no, I, I, I believe, you know, based on the inquiries and based on, you know, the availability, that the rents that would be indexed, you know, should they hit the open market, you know, would be, would be significantly higher. And I think, you know, again, it goes to the availability, it goes to location, and I think it goes to the quality of, of the bill.
Did you do any rent compare or market studies in your workup or financing or, you know, I would imagine you'd had to do a market study in terms of the two-bedroom rental rates?
Well, we did, and, and two things. I mean, again, I think you go to, to Everly where, you know, again, rents are, you know, are-
I don't, I don't really think Everly is a comparable in this consideration. It's, it's kind of a different market. Recently Ridgewood, a set of eight two-bedroom units came on the market. I don't know what those rents are, but, and, and I, it's getting late and I don't want to belabor it, but it, it's hard for me personally to support without a little bit more, you know, if you, if you had an 80% AMI for a one-bedroom unit, that still is a rent of 1450. And, you know, I, I think that that, that's still, given what the wage rates of a lot of the people who live in our community, 1450 is, is still quite a reach for people. So again, I understand the numbers and where you've, you know, the investment that has been made. But if I'm looking for a public benefit from, you know, the money that is coming out of the CPC, I guess I would probably, I would, I would need to support a little bit more affordability. So, but that's my point of view and I just wanted to share it with the full council.
Thank you, Counselor Snap. Counselor Cullen, please.
Yes, I went on a tour today, as Rob mentioned, and was very impressed with everything that's, that's going on in that building, from the details of the, the bricks in front to the cafe. And it just, you know, you walk in there and it has a sense of spirit about it that is really, I think, where we want to go on Main Street in Hyannis. And I, I throw my full weight of support behind it. I'm very thankful that we're, we're looking at median income there and that, you know, you've reached out to the right people to, to make it happen and the right partners by using CAM and other local businesses. Another very important part of the project. And I really want to thank you for your investment in Hyannis because we need people like you. I'm with the crowds on that. We have to stop being the place where all the, where, where all the bad things happen and start being the place where all the right things happen. And I think the Film Fest this summer has been a great, great addition and really helped people deal in a time that's very uncertain and very scary. And I really look forward to, you know, getting past all of it and being able to ride my bike there for pastries. It'll be awesome. So thanks again for everything. I really appreciate your work.
Thank you, Counselor Cullen. Any other, Madam Vice President, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would concur with both my fellow counselors. Not only does the project look great, but I look forward to seeing, seeing that corner revitalized as well. I see that the, the monies came out of Undesignated Fund. Did you apply for it under Historic or did you apply for it under Housing? Before you answer that, I also would like to know how much other funding you've received on this project and from whom. Thank you.
Thank you. So we, we applied as, you know, as a project that was both historic and, you know, and, and creating affordable housing. So I don't believe that we had designated, you know, where we, we thought the funds would come from. We described the project to the CPC and, you know, and let them. So we, we explored the availability of historic tax credits. Obviously, you know, in, in looking at a, at a historic building, we went to, you know, to consultants and, and we were told that that would not, we weren't, we didn't qualify. The, the project would not be, you know, would not be available for that. And that was, it was disappointing. But it was, you know, Cape Cod Five that stepped up and, you know, provided us with 1.936 million dollars in, you know, in financing. And the rest of that, you know, that gap, you know, just shy of, 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 I think if you, you include, sorry, the, it's 934,000 of, you know, of our own private investment. So, and that, that is, you know, with counting on the $300,000 from CPC, that's not included, you know, in, in that, that number. So 1.936 in, in bank financing and 934,000 in, in private investment.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice President, for that question. Any other counselors? Counselor Shaughnessy?
I'd just like to voice my support for the project as the Town Counselor for Precinct Nine. I also want to welcome Bill and Chad to Precinct Nine. We're happy to have you. And I'm just excited to see, I think really the last time anyone put any time or attention into the East End of Main Street was Ken Shaughnessy. So the most I can do as a Town Counselor is, in honor of Ken Shaughnessy, I want to throw my support behind the project and I want to thank you, not only for the Sea Captain's Row, but also the 255 Main Street. I really appreciate the fact that you believe in downtown Hyannis as I do and that you're willing to invest in downtown Hyannis. So thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to-
Mr. President, I, I would like to make a motion that we vote on item 2021-003 is presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Thank you very much. So this is a vote to approve item number 2021-03, 003, as read. Madam Clerk, please.
I'll first. Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Ralph Crussey?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Snap?
No.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
One passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, so it was my intention to, to take care of the new business, but I just got a text message. We have a lot of people in the waiting room. My thought was this, it was not to give priority to anybody else, but it was for us to clear the board so that we could put extensive effort into item number 2020-192. So with permission of, of the counselors, we're going to go back to old business and we're going to go into item 192 so that, I meant no disrespect to the public, my intent was to give us plenty of time. So I apologize to those in the waiting room. Counselor Snap has a question?
Yes, I didn't know if you and/or Legal wanted to deal with item 2020-193 before we get to 192.
Yes, thank you. That's a, that's a very good point. So I would like Legal, if Legal could come to speak to that. Counselor Star, you wanted to say something?
No, I was going to say what you're going to say, that we want to, we need to, we need to address those questions.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Thank you. So if Legal could come and talk to us about item number 2020-193.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just learned of a procedural irregularity, which in my view makes the planning board report invalid. So I am recommending that the council withdraw that item from tonight's agenda and refer it back to the planning board for consideration. The planning board will have to hold a hearing and issue a new report to the council.
Thank you very much. Any questions of our attorney? If, if not, I would entertain a motion to have the Town Council refer item number 2020-193 back to the planning board and to withdraw that item from Town Council consideration.
I apologize, Mr. President. I, I, I do have a question for Town Council. If that, if-
Yes, I, I accept that.
If you could just be a little bit more expansive with regard to the procedural irregularity.
Yes, Counselor Bogan. The planning board report was legally deficient because of who participated in the preparation of that report.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Bogan. I'm sorry.
Second.
We had a first, we had a second. Thank you very much. So this is to approve a motion to have the Town Council refer item number 2020-193 back to the planning board and to withdraw that item from the Town Council's consideration. Madam Clerk, a roll call, please.
I'll first. Dagwone?
Yes.
Ralph Crussey?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Snap? Snap? Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Snap?
I'm hearing from Paula Snap now that her internet is gone. She's trying.
I'll keep my eye out for her.
Thank you, Sarah.
Ten, yes.
Ten, yes, okay. So the item, the item passes. Thank you very, very much. Actually, I have, I was going to ask Counselor Snap to read, but, and, and, Counselor Cullen, would you mind reading in item 2020-192, the orders of the day?
Sure. Item 2020-192, order amending the general ordinances by adding Chapter 90 Short-Term Rental Properties and amending Chapter 170 Rental Properties. This is a public hearing with a roll call majority, as written.
Thank you very, very much. So hopefully-
All right.
What's that? It's Counselor Snap back.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Snap-
Counselor Snap, you're, you're, you're-
Okay, let's see if Counselor Snap comes back. What we want to have is, Counselor Snap was prepared to give a, a-
Excuse me, President, she's calling in now. She'll be using her, just the audio on her phone like a regular telephone.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. President, on the previous vote, on the, does that begin a new clock on that item going back to the planning board?
My understanding, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Legal, yes, it is.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Star?
Well, while we're waiting, can we hear from Legal about a vote on what, what the majority, what the two-thirds vote?
Thank you, thank you very much, Counselor. That's, that's very good. So Legal, can you please explain to us what, what will be a, what will be the vote on this? Is it going to be a simple majority or is there any, anything other that we should know about?
For the regulatory ordinance, it is a majority vote.
Just simple majority, which in this case, is it of those in the room, right?
It's a majority of those present and voting.
Okay, so tonight, right now, at 11-
And we think we have at least nine per form.
Yes, so we have a form and it would be nine, it would be, we're 11 of us, so it would be seven, would be, would be a simple majority?
Six.
Six would be-
Am I, am I back in?
Yes, you are.
Okay. All right, I'm hoping to go back on internet, but right now I'm off, so.
We, we understand and we appreciate your effort to get back on. Paula, do you feel comfortable making your presentation on the phone?
Sure. Did, did you hear my motion or did someone else make it?
Which motion?
It was to lift up a 93, refer to planning board. So I don't know if that happened in my absence.
Yes, we did take the vote. And would you like to weigh in on that? Was that a yes or a no on your part?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I think you make that 11, so it passed with 11.
Okay, okay. And it looks like I'm going to come back on Zoom, in the Zoom in just a minute if, if Sarah puts me back on.
Okay. Because following Counselor Snap, the, our planning board will make a presentation. So then right after that would be right to public comment. I, I apologize to the public and also to the counselors. It was my hope that we would have gotten farther along at this point. We, we're going into executive session later on. Okay, Counselor Snap, are you prepared? You okay?
So we moved opening 192, right?
Yes, Counselor Cullen, write it in, yes.
Okay, great. All right, I, so I just wanted to, before we embark on rationale, I just wanted to briefly acknowledge and thank all of you that have been working so hard on this process to move forward with these general and zoning ordinances. I'd like to include in my thanks the community. We have received numerous emails, either in support or not, and, and ideas in terms of how we could amend the zoning. And I think these have all been good food for thought for the council to consider. I'd like to also thank the staff for many, many hours of pulling together the general ordinance and the zoning ordinance, but also the process in which we've been moving this from committee to Town Council. And I'd like to lastly thank my colleagues on the council because you have been doing a lot of work, a lot of homework before this evening, and you will be doing even more so tonight and the following weeks in which we're trying to fashion ordinances that really make sense for our community today. And you will hear, I'm sure, a lot in public comments and I will go quickly to the rationale so that staff can also make a short presentation before we go to public comment. The general ordinance that we're discussing tonight, it aims to create enforceable standards for the operation and occupancy of short-term rentals that promote the safety of our residents and gets and provide a clear understanding of what is permitted in terms of renting a residential dwelling in the town of Barnstable. and provide a clear understanding of what is permitted in terms of renting a residential dwelling in the town of Barnstable. This is presented in a manner consistent with Commonwealth's Short Term Rental Law, which was recently passed at the end of 2018. As you've heard before in other meetings, the approach to our short-term rentals is twofold, with a general ordinance providing, uh, regulations on how those rentals, uh, can occur in our town and to be, um, enforced by inspectional services. And then also a zoning ordinance which serves to clarify, um, the zoning and uses in the town of Barnstable. The general ordinance, uh, currently limits the number of short-term rental registrations that may be issued to a single owner till two. The general ordinance also provides, uh, several provisions to address the health, safety, and community concerns, including measures to keep the public informed of short-term rentals registered in their neighborhood. And finally, uh, the proposed general ordinance is, proposes occupancy restrictions, and I know that that has been a very lively topic of discussion. And those, that ordinance that's currently before you, uh, allows for a maximum occupants of two per bedroom plus an additional two. This proposed general ordinance requires a passage. Uh, and I believe unless Legal contradicts me, that would be, uh, seven members of the, uh, current sitting council. Um, we are able to, uh, entertain, um, any types of amendments of this general ordinance, and I hope that we are able to do that this evening. I'd like to pass, uh, this over to our Assistant Town Manager, Andy Clyburn, for a few more remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Hebert, Vice President Ralph Crisetti, and all Town Counselors. Uh, I'm Andy Clyburn, Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager of Town of Barnstable. I'm joined this evening by the Director of Planning and Development, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Inspection Services and Building Commissioner Brian Florence, Town Attorney Karen Novar and her legal staff. So now we're gonna be presenting the regulatory approach for short-term rentals proposed by the Zoning and Regulatory Subcommittee of Town Council. This Subcommittee of Town Counselors are the policymakers who have been tasked recommending how the town of Barnstable should regulate short-term rental. The regulatory approach recommended by these counselors includes two parts. General ordinance establishing regulations for short-term rentals and a zoning ordinance clarifying that short-term rentals are permissible use for residential dwellings. All of the town departments here this evening have provided staff support to these policymakers in developing the proposed regulations. Seven hundred and seventy-six short-term rentals exist in the town of Barnstable. Although vacation rentals have always been a customary part of our community, a large portion of those rentals are now part of what the state has defined as a short-term rental. Do you rent your property for thirty days or less? You are operating a short-term rental in the state of Massachusetts. Renting your home is a property rights issue. Many people assume they have the right to rent their property. Rental owners in Barnstable are required to register with the town through the Board of Health Rental Registry. This registry currently makes noticing distinction on the length of stay or zoning district. Does that mean that we have to change zoning in the town of Barnstable to allow short-term rentals? Absolutely not, we don't. Many communities have simply allowed short-term rentals to register as any other rental in town. Unfortunately, if you take that stance, you are not addressing short-term rentals being operated in areas that some believe they are not allowed. Some believe that short-term rentals are not allowed in residentially zoned areas. Others believe that because they have rented their property for decades in those very same areas, that means that short-term rentals are allowed there. The question of where short-term rentals may be allowed is one of the multitude of issues this Subcommittee has discussed over the past several months. Currently, of the seven hundred and seventy-six short-term rentals in town, there are properties in every zoning district and offering stays ranging from days to weeks to years. So what's next? Doing nothing is certainly an option. Banning short-term rentals altogether is another option, as is banning them in certain zoning districts. If short-term rentals were not currently here, perhaps the town would consider allowing them in certain zoning districts and take a let's see how this goes approach. Unfortunately, that approach in this situation would adversely affect many residents currently renting their homes. Instead, the policymakers tasked with working through this issue is proposing that Barnstable regulate short-term rentals in all zoning districts rather than banning them in any zoning district. The most commonly cited purpose for regulating, for regulating short-term rentals is to protect, protect the character of existing residential neighborhood. It is a real concern. The ability to rent one's property may be of tremendous value to a homeowner, but it can also be a disruptive element for others living in those very same residential neighborhoods. These counselors have been working on how to best address these competing issues. As someone observing from a staff support role, I would say that compromise has not always been easy and the issue has had a polarizing effect on our community. Counselor Mary's comments earlier this evening were spot-on and are overwhelmingly appreciated. Our frontline staff gets that anger every single day. So why take up the issue of short-term rental now? It's a great question. Online rental platforms have been around for many years. Property owners and prospective renters have become accustomed to their use. Things changed in January of 2019 when Governor Baker signed the Short Term Rental Tax into law. This action is what brought this issue forward more than anything else. The Department of Revenue is now taxing short-term rentals, including what is often referred to as traditional K-5s. Town Council leadership at that time of Baker's signing felt that the implementation of this tax should lead to the implementation of short-term regulations and subsequently sent the issue for zoning and Regulatory Subcommittee consideration. Tonight's policymakers are proposing short-term rentals be defined by the.
See my phone, but.
Tonight's policymakers are proposing short-term rentals be defined by the state definition of short-term rental and affirmed as an allowable use in all the zoning districts. Further, the use can be regulated by a short-term rental general ordinance. This hand and glove approach is an effort to find middle ground that addresses all community concerns. The zoning amendment alone would not suffice, and it was never the intent of this group to simply define short-term rentals and allow them everywhere in town. Similarly, a general ordinance regulating short-term rentals alone, while a step in the right direction, would not definitively answer the question of where short-term rentals may operate. Proposing regulations with ambiguity of where those regulations apply is unpalatable. This would, this would result in exactly where we have been, with some residents feeling short-term rentals are allowed because of years of traditional rentals, and some residents feeling short-term rentals are prohibited as a result of what they believe to be very carefully constructed zoning. All property owners deserve clarity, which is why the issue is before this group of policymakers tonight. It may be very clear to some folks on both sides of this issue. Unfortunately, when it is very clear to both sides on an issue, each, but what they each see very clearly is very different. There is not clarity. That's where we are in this issue. Perhaps the town should never have allowed rentals to occur in residential zones, and now is the time to, quote, phase them out. Perhaps the market has changed and short-term rentals, as we see them today, were never considered when zoning was put into place, and regulations are now needed to address current concern. Either way, any limits or bans will impact our residents, and those impacts should be very carefully considered. This group of policymakers has, has attempted to put short-term rental limits into the proposed general ordinance in front of you this evening. Additionally, this general ordinance will provide the framework to add limits as the community desires, whether that be prior to approval or anytime in the future. These limits could be minimumized stays, maximum stays per year, limits on total number of STRs registered annually, residency requirements, or a multitude of other concerns. In conclusion, I want to restate that this regulatory framework is being put into place, STRs, current and future. This is not an effort to bring short-term rentals to Barnstable. Quite the contrary, short-term rentals are in Barnstable and should be regulated. With that, I'd like to turn it over to our Director of Planning and Development, Elizabeth Jenkins, who will lead us through the, uh, proposed general ordinance.
Thank you, Assistant Manager Clyburn. Good evening, Counselors Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. Uh, if you allow, I have, uh, some slides to assist in walking us through the content of the general ordinance. As Assistant Town Manager Clyburn indicated, the approach, uh, in front of the council is twofold. Uh, a general ordinance requiring short-term rentals to be registered and regulated, and a zoning amendment to address the use. It is the zoning that allows the use and the general ordinance that puts the controls in place. I'm going to briefly walk you through the content of the general ordinance 2020-192. I'll also very briefly discuss the zoning ordinance for context. Um, although, as was stated, um, that public hearing is not open and that item will not be heard tonight. The general ordinance begins with definitions of the terms, um, that we are using. Uh, notably, a definition for short-term rental that reads "a residential dwelling" or "any portion of a dwelling rented out through the use of advanced reservations for a fee for a period of not more than thirty-one consecutive calendar days." Um, from there, it goes on to define by exclusion what a short-term rental is not. A hotel, motel, lodging house, bunnied breakfast. Additionally, cottage colony, and then provides a definition of cottage colony to recognize this unique historic land use in our town. Uh, there are also provisions for, um, operator. That is the term we are using for host, um, as well as owner and person. Uh, occupant is the term we are using for guest. I will note that these definitions were based off of the Department of Revenue definitions for consistency. The town's in no way required to use those definitions, but again, it seemed a reasonable baseline to begin regulating short-term rentals. The general ordinance requires all short-term rentals to be registered with the town's Inspection Service Department. Lays out requirements for an application, fee, renewal. Um, one license is issued to one owner, is issued to each short-term rental. Uh, those are, registrations are not transferable, and registrations must be published, um, when advertising short-term rentals for let. These provisions parallel our existing Board of Health rental registration requirements but are tailored specifically to the challenges of regulating short-term rental use. Additionally, the proposed ordinance requires a limit on the number of registrations per owner. The ordinance limits the number of registrations per owner to two, and the purpose of this, um, was to limit speculative investment in our housing stock for the sole purpose of buying a home and renting it as a short-term rental, while recognizing that many in our community have long histories here and that they may have interest in multiple properties. A key component of the general ordinance is accountability. Um, for each short-term rental that's registered with the town, ownership information must be provided to help enforce the previous requirements, um, of limitations. In addition, in addition to owner information, um, every short-term rental must provide information of an operat, of an operator or an agent. Um, this is an individual that must be available within one hour of contact by the town or emergency services personnel should, should an issue arise at a short-term rental. They must be available twenty-four seven. Uh, that contact information must be posted, uh, in the rental. Additionally, on the theme of accountability, um, accountability to neighbors was also something that came forward as being extremely important. Uh, to this end, uh, the town would be required to provide online a list of all of the short-term rental registrations, uh, the contact information, uh, discussed on the previous slide, uh, the regulations, um, that everybody must conform to and to provide a process for filing complaints. Additionally, all this information, um, the regulations, uh, in the ordinance, the expectation, um, for both hosting short-term rentals and being a guest of a short-term rental in the town of Barnstable, um, will be provided to operators, and operators must provide that information to occupants, um, so they are aware of our, our, our local regulation. The ordinance requires this information to be provided in templates by the town who it's provided conveniently and accurately to all parties. There are several, there are several provisions that are specific to the short-term rental use uh, in the proposed general ordinance. The first being the occupancy requirements, um, previously mentioned by Counselor Schnep. Um, the occupancy requirements would be a maximum of two persons per bedroom plus an additional two persons. There are additional requirements for trash removal to ensure that trash is removed, uh, frequently and does not create an issue. The regulation proposed in, in the ordinance is once, um, every time an occupancy is concluded, or once per week, whichever is more frequent. An overriding purpose of registering short-term rentals is to ensure health and safety uh, of our residents and guests. Um, to this end, uh, the ordinance provides an opportunity for the town to conduct inspections of short-term rentals, again, to further enforcement of state, uh, state and local uh, health and safety regulations. Additionally, the ordinance requires short-term rentals to meet standards that apply to single-family homes for the provision of smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. The proposed ordinance, uh, provides a process for filing complaints with the Inspection Services Department that includes timelines. There's also an extremely comprehensive toolbox of options to be able to respond to a variety of complaints that range from issuing tickets for less egregious violations, written notices for those more serious, and for the most egregious of violations, to bring someone in to a local hearing with pen, with penalties up to registration revocation. Uh, the ordinance establishes a local appellate process and a local hearing officer. And of course, there is provided, um, the judicial process where, again, egregious violators can be brought, brought to court immediately and the town can seek injunction against their use of a property as a short-term rental. Um, Building Commissioner Brian Florence, uh, will tell you that this is the most comprehensive set of remedies that are available to him um, to enforce and, to enforce regulations that are on our books and also speak to the advantages of enforcement, having these enforcement provisions in a general ordinance as opposed to a zoning ordinance. Finally, the proposal that's before the council includes an amendment to our existing rental registration requirements, Chapter 170. It makes two minor amendments to distinguish our rental registration program from our short-term rental registration program. That concludes the overview of the general ordinance. Again, just for context, I will provide the content of, uh, the zoning amendment. Again, the purpose of the zoning amendment being to define, define and recognize short-term rentals as a permitted use in residential dwelling units. Uh, the, the zoning ordinance provides a definition that's consistent with that provided in the general ordinance. Um, I will note that it recognizes short-term rentals as a permitted use in lawful residential dwelling units. Um, and this does exclude short-term rentals from taking place in tents, treehouses, or garages. Um, there's been much conversation throughout this process about the appropriate location uh, to provide some of these regulations. In the case of regulating parking, it was found that the most appropriate location to put this land use regulation was in the zoning. So you will find the parking restrictions, uh, in the zoning ordinance, uh, and that they restrict parking, um, from, they restrict cars from being parked in the front yard of a property. Finally, um, again, the, the approach that was put forward by the Zoning and Regulatory Committee was twofold. Um, both a general ordinance and a zoning ordinance. Again, the general ordinance requiring a majority vote, the zoning a two-thirds. Um, I do think it's worth, worth discussing, um, the implications of, of implementing one of these ordinances and not the other, uh, or vice versa, in the form that they have been structured and recommended by the Zoning and Regulatory Committee. Um, so I'll just take you briefly through this calculus. Should a zoning ordinance and a general ordinance both move forward, it would establish short-term rentals as an allowable use, uh, in the zoning ordinance and require short-term rentals to be registered and regulated townwide by a new general ordinance. And, and this was a proposal that was put forward by the Zoning and Regulatory Committee. And this was a proposal that was put forward by the zoning and regulatory committee. Moving forward with just a general ordinance but not a zoning ordinance would require short-term rentals to be registered, and they would be regulated townwide. And this would be... These regulations that are in the proposed general ordinance are more comprehensive and restrictive than those that would just be required by registration through the Board of Health. However, there would be no change to zoning, and we would continue to have debate over where short-term rentals are permitted in town. Should a zoning ordinance move forward but not a general ordinance, short-term rentals would be established as an allowable use of a dwelling in the zoning ordinance. And it would continue to have to be registered with the Board of Health rental registry program. And our debate over where short-term rentals are permitted in town would be resolved. Finally, should no general ordinance or no zoning ordinance proceed, short-term rentals would be registered and regulated, the same as all other rentals in the town of Barnstable, and that's under the Board of Health rental registry. And this no-change approach is consistent with what we've seen in many other Cape Cod communities. That concludes my overview. Thank you. Counselor Keever, you're muted.
Oh, you're muted.
I'm sorry about that. Counselors, I would ask that we move to open the public hearing on Item Number 2020-192. With all due respect to people who have been waiting. Do I have a fair?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, second. So we have that. So we're going to open it right up to the public. Again, I apologize for the late hour. Good, Sarah, we start to introduce folks?
Yes, just give me one second, please.
Counselors, definitely we're going to be moving this to another night, but another time. But the people who have been waiting, I would like them to speak right now.
Presser Keever, we have Chuck Tuttle. Chuck, now's your chance for public comment.
Welcome, Mr. Tuttle.
Just need to unmute yourself, Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, Mr. Tuttle. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Council, for your hard work on everything you do. But public comment on an important issue like this at 10:35 at night needs a lot to be desired. In any event, the first line of the Town Council mission statement: "Our mission is to protect the town of Barnstable's quality of life and unique character." That is the Town Council's mission statement. "I don't understand why the Town Council would jeopardize the high quality of life in residential neighborhoods with the ability for people to treat houses purely as investments with little regard to full-time residents. The basic tenants of real estate are peaceful enjoyment and quiet enjoyment of one's property. If the house next door is being rented for one night, two nights, three-night stands by visitors who are engaged in loud social activities, partying, then the rights of the neighbor's quiet enjoyment is being trampled. I don't understand how anybody could view high-risk rentals, one-, two-, and three-night rentals in residential neighborhoods as a good idea. I don't understand how the Town Council has let this really bad idea get this far. High-risk rentals are not good. They are high-risk. High-risk rentals would significantly and negatively impact our community as they have changed, for the worse, other communities all over this country. Hotels, motels, and bed and breakfast establishments have special licenses for a reason, because they welcome transient guests for one, two, and three nights. We do not need very short-term accommodations offered in residential neighborhoods. We do not need residential landowners to be competing with our hotels and motels and bed and breakfast establishments on Cape Cod. There are certainly areas within the town of Barnstable that have historically welcomed high-risk rentals and short-term rentals. Those areas should be allowed to continue that Cape Cod tradition. The bylaw as proposed allows any house to become a high-risk rental. Please don't accept the Cape Cod and Islands Association of Realtors campaign to support the really bad idea of welcoming high-risk rentals. Their ads do not represent the silent majority of real estate professionals that understand that high-risk rentals are a really bad idea. I work in real estate. I work the market seven days a week, helping people buy and sell homes. In the last three weeks alone, at Turn Lane in Centerville, Route 6A in West Barnstable, Five Corners Road in Centerville, and even at a $1.7 million property in Oyster Harbors, the question buyers ask is, "Are there any restrictions on renting this property?" That question's coming more... I never used to hear that. It's happening more and more and more. Regardless of the value or the geographic location, are there any restrictions on renting this property? What does that tell you? Airbnb, here we come. One night, two nights, three nights. Please remember the mission statement of the Town Council to which you swore an oath: "To protect the town of Barnstable's quality of life and unique character." Mark my words. If you Town Councilors allow high-risk rentals in established residential neighborhoods, it will negatively affect property values, will negatively affect the quality of life in Barnstable, and it will negatively affect our unique character. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Mr. Shulte, now is your turn for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Shulte.
Good evening. My name is Bob Shulte, and my wife and I live in Centerville. I've been members of the Central Civic Association for almost 25 years. I'd like to speak briefly to you about the importance of establishing clear and meaningful enforcement policies as part of any general ordinance that you may ultimately vote on. Without specific guidelines and timelines for enforcement and the appropriate staffing levels to actually enforce them, this will be a meaningless exercise. Councilor Cullum very eloquently summed up the enforcement issue during her remarks at the May 14th Zoning and Regulatory Committee meeting, a body of which she is a member. A transcript of her full remarks on the enforcement issue was included in the Amendment Idea documents that you were all provided with by the civic associations. However, the general public has not seen or heard her comments regarding STR enforcement, so I'll provide you with a few of her direct quotes so they can see how important she felt enforcement is. Here's what she had to say. "This is going to be what makes or breaks this ordinance, in my opinion. So what are we offering people? Are they calling the police department to then triage it to inspection services after it's all tapped down? I really feel that unless we have that shored up, we are failing the public on this. There is no point, because right now, people don't complain. They don't have a reliable place to complain, and that's the whole point." Again, referring to enforcement, Councilor Cullum said, "I know it's the back end of all this, but it's the most important thing, in my opinion." This is why it is essential that you review, discuss, and amend the general ordinance proposal before you make sure... Before you make sure... Vote on this before you make sure it includes the following: Specific timelines for enforcement, not vague references like we're seeing now that say "action will be taken within a reasonable timeframe." What does that mean? Adequate levels of enforcement personnel so that violations can be responded to 24/7. Councilor Cullum really drove that point home in her public remarks. Registration fees that help cover the cost of enforcing the regulation. The proposed $35 STR registration fee, which was actually reduced from the original proposal, is less than the cost of a Barnstable beach sticker. The council previously voted to allocate a majority of the STR tax money received from the state to help fund infrastructure costs. That is why it is essential that the STR registration fees and the penalties for violations are set at levels that will cover the cost of enforcement. Speaking of penalties, the $100 and $200 fees included in the proposal are woefully inadequate. STR owners will view that level of penalties as just a cost of doing business and will simply increase their nightly rates to cover any penalties. It is critical that the penalties have teeth in them and create an incentive for STR owners to make sure their renters follow the town laws. Finally, I've had personal conversations with several of you who have told me that you agree that the enforcement piece is critical and that the proposed penalties are insufficient. You have here before a document developed and endorsed by a majority of the Town Civic Association. These groups represent the citizens who voted you into office. I believe you all have a moral, if not a legal obligation, to take the necessary time to thoroughly review and publicly discuss this information before you even consider taking a final vote on either of the STR items before you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Shulte. We're going to pause for public comment for a minute. We need to take a vote if we're going to go past 11 o'clock. I need the permission of the council to move past 11 o'clock. It is now 10:44. We also have people who have been waiting for over three hours going towards four hours. So I would ask for your indulgence that we do go past 11 o'clock to finish business, but I would like to let the people who have been waiting so long speak. So whether you let me do that or not, can we at least vote right now that we're going to go past 11 o'clock? I'm asking for a second on this.
I could. You need a two-thirds vote, Mr. President.
Okay, two-thirds vote to go on past 11 o'clock. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors, Ralph Crissetti.
Yes.
Keever.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
You're here.
Thank you very much, Counselors. I appreciate that. We're going to go continue now with public comment. Is Ms. Penn the next one? Mrs. Penn?
Yes, she is. Belisha, you have...
Point of order, Mr. President. Point of order. Just trying to be respectful and looking at the hour. I'd actually like to make a motion that we continue this item to our next meeting.
Second.
Now?
All right, we have a motion, a first and a second. Counselor Shaughnessy.
Just for discussion on the motion?
Yes.
I think minimally, we should allow the people that have waited this long that are here for a public comment, at least to allow them to say their piece where they've waited this long, and then, after that's done, table the item for another night. That's just my two cents.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Miss, Council Dagwan?
Yes, do we have any idea how many people we're talking about? And could we possibly put a limit on how long we're going to go tonight?
Okay.
Take a clock or something like that.
Okay. So there were 27. There were 17 at the last count. I'm assuming there are fewer at this point.
Including Ms. Penn, I have 14. I'm not sure how many on the phone went beyond that.
Okay, this is...
There were three on the phone.
Yeah. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. And the motion on the floor, would you please repeat it, Counselors Stein Hilber?
Well, like I said, it's almost 11 o'clock. We have six more items plus an executive session. And this is going to be a long discussion. So my motion was to continue this item to the next meeting.
To September 3rd.
September 3rd.
So we have a first, we have a second. Well, they said the pleasure of the council...
The roll call vote, right?
Isn't it a roll call vote? Yes, yes, it's a vote.
Is this a two-thirds or a majority?
Majority.
This is majority.
So this is a motion to approve going... Closing this meeting and moving it to...
Excuse me, Mr. President, to continue the public hearing to the September 3rd Town Council meeting.
Okay, so this is a motion to approve to continue the public hearing on Item 2020-192 to September 3rd. Closing the public... And we're not closing public hearing. We're continuing public hearing.
Correct.
To the 3rd.
Let's go.
Madam Clerk.
What's that?
Madam Clerk, you would call on Madam Clerk to take a roll call.
Please, yeah.
Counselors. Keever.
No.
Lebec.
No.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
No.
Shaughnessy.
No.
Starr.
No.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Bogan.
No.
Cullum.
No.
Dagwan.
No.
Ralph Crissetti.
No.
Phil.
Okay, so again, I apologize to the public. I apologize to the Counselors. This is very awkward, but we're not going to entertain comments for Mrs. Penn, please.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully, my comments are limited to three minutes, okay? Hopefully, you've read my memo, which I emailed a few weeks ago. It started with a clarification of what historical rentals consisted of in the town of Barnstable. And after that, the memo included a residential zoning analysis where I highlighted the seven residential zones that currently allow by right accessory use to rent rooms to up to three unrelated persons. The reason I presented this to you is because I am asking the town to consider taking baby steps in the rollout of STRs. I ask that you consider doing this incrementally and that you consider the ordinance before you tonight a beta version and therefore confine STRs to the seven residential zones that already allow room rentals to unrelated persons. If you choose to accept that premise, please withdraw the proposed zoning amendment when and if it comes back to you until we have the experience that supports expansion to all zoning districts. You have to face the possibility that a massive proliferation of STRs may overwhelm our resources. Since you have no idea of how many of these will exist in response to your actions tonight or the next meeting, the next, whenever you take your vote, let's take it one step at a time and make it manageable. My second request is to please delete the words "plus two", as proposed in Section 190-9 of the ordinance. I'm concerned that allowing STR owners to have greater density than what our zoning currently allows all homeowners creates an inequality that it establishes the precedence for these dwellings to exceed the maximum number of occupants allowed by zoning for those who rent versus the rest of us who don't rent. It's like you're creating a separate class of homeowners, and they get an advantage because they're renting. I object strongly to this and question the legitimacy of providing an exemption from zoning for short-term rentals. Please remove those two words, "plus two", My third request is that you list either what is rentable or what is not rentable. In the memo, I referenced two examples of plausible rentable spaces. I'm sure you can think of others. The real estate market, as you know, is very hot and every aspect is now a commodity. Somebody will think of renting something that we just haven't thought of. I think we need to keep our focus on houses and bedrooms that conform to our existing zoning definitions and the number of occupants that do the same. You can review the rest of my requests on pages four and five of my memo. Additionally, I'm asking you to please consider a minimum of a three-night rental. Anyone wishing to stay for less can avail themselves of the numerous hospitality facilities in the area. In summary, I hope you'll consider this a trial and you agree to take baby steps, so you can measure the resulting behavior before you, before you open the gates wide. I also ask that you keep the public hearing open and continue it as needed as further discussion happens. Thank you, thank you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Penn, we appreciate it, thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next is CD, uh, if you could unmute yourself and introduce yourself for your public comment.
CD. Can we put somebody up? Oh, well, oh, CD, I'm set, let's go.
I'm pulling the next person.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Hello, hello, is someone at CD? It's your turn for public comment, you could introduce yourself.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, can you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I just, I was looking for clar- oh, sorry, my name's Lynn.
Okay, Lynn.
Um, I'm point of order.
Yes.
I'm looking for clarification, if I live in a homeowners association that does not allow short-term rental.
Excuse me.
Excuse me.
Point of order.
CD, CD, please, wait.
Could, could the person speaking, please identify herself with her first and last name, please, for the record?
CD?
Yes, my name's Lynn Donahue.
All right, thank you. Okay, Lynn, I'm set. Lynn? Lynn, are you still there?
Yes, I'm still here, can you hear me?
Yes, please, yep, we're waiting for you, Lynn.
Okay, so, I don't know if you heard what I was asking, I was just looking for clarification on the rule.
What rules?
So, if I live in a homeowners association that does not allow short-term rental.
Correct. Then you can't have a short-term rental, if you live in an association that has that rule, you, you can't do a, um, short-term rental.
Okay, thank you, that's, I didn't know if this new rule override that.
No, no, it does not, thank you for the question, Lynn. I'm set, Lynn? Thank you.
Next for public comment is Kupi Craft.
Hello?
Uh, Ms. Craft, you need to unmute your microphone, please.
Thank you, good evening to everyone. Thank you for going so late. My husband and I are.
Ms. Craft, can you mute your TV, please?
Are homeowners in Osterville, I'm also a licensed real estate agent in Massachusetts, and I'm very concerned about these short-term rentals. Um, I really support everything I've heard from the public tonight. Uh, the idea of having an emergency contact person in every house, I think, is critical, where somebody can get there within an hour, but I think that name and number has to be registered with the town. If the police arrive and for some reason that name's not posted or not available, there is no recourse. So, I think a lot of the rules that we're talking about tonight really need to be reexamined and revisited, and I would urge you all to delay a vote and not take a vote this evening, that would be my request. The, um, I think the parking, to permit parking on the lawn, really needs to be reexamined. Um, just because you're saying that they can't park in the front of the house, people don't wanna live next door to ten cars stacked up, uh, on a lawn. Um, there are just some things that have been mentioned that need to really be further thrash, thrash, uh, thrashed out, something like the trash removal, who's gonna monitor that? If it's not taken away, then what? Uh, the idea about the enforcers and having the staff, uh, from the town to, um, to, to enforce these rules is, is going to be critical. Anyway, I respectfully request that you table this for this evening, this vote, and I would urge you to have more discussion and, um, more, more detail on exactly, uh, what these short-term rentals are going to be all about. It's going to be a very negative impact on most of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Craft, thank you. Uh, our next person is.
Mr. Sutphen, you're up for public comment, just unmute yourself, please.
Okay, there you go. Good evening, council members. For the record, my name is Niles Sutphen, I'm an architect and planner, my office is in Boston, however, I'm a twenty-year resident of the village of Centerville. This evening, you, the council members, are being asked to vote on one of the most important changes of zoning that has occurred in the town of Barnstable over the past twenty-five years. This is a profound change, allowing a business use to operate in the form of a hotel in any of the residential districts in the town of Barnstable. Think about it. If enacted, the advantages that we all enjoy or, and have enjoyed for so many years in the town of Barnstable in our neighborhoods, the lifestyle, the safety, the comfort, and the sanctity of all of our neighborhoods, as now or will have if you pass this zoning, will have the strong potential to be disrupted and possibly permanently damaged. You've heard the old saying, well, there goes the neighborhood, and this will give that, I think, new meaning. With the enactment of this new zoning, the potential for real loss is very apparent. Don't forget, you will be allowing a business use to operate in any residential area. I don't think that is a desirable action to take. Secondly, I just wanted to comment on twenty twenty-one ninety-two, the general ordinance. As I read the, through the, uh, proposed regulations or ordinances, several things come to my mind. Currently, there are about seven hundred to eight hundred STRs operating throughout Barnstable. If these new regulations are voted on this evening, that number probably will easily double over the next year. I don't think the building department in the town of Barnstable can possibly manage this kind of additional program. In my view, as an architect, every STR should minimally be certified, professionally certified as, as to adequacy of sewage capacity, minimum of two means of egress in case of an emergency, that's a simple building code requirement for every project, uh, every building that we build or an existing building in the state of Massachusetts. Parking spaces should be designated and controlled, house rules should be posted and established, oh, and, oh, to establish noise control, exterior lighting control, yard use, garbage management, et cetera, et cetera. Proposed fines, by the way, listed in the general ordinances, in my view, ought to be tripled, current ones are a bargain. I strongly recommend postponing this vote tonight and instead, set up meetings where all of these issues can be adequately vetted in order to find better solutions instead of embarking on the current course of a point of no return. Oh, I thank you for listening to my comments, but I strongly urge you to vote to postpone this and allow much, much more additional comment, uh, and vetting, oh, of all of these regulations. I am not against STRs, oh, they have their place and will probably will continue to have their place in the town of Barnstable, but this has not been thought out well. I urge you, uh, to postpone this vote this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, have a good evening, thank you. Uh, Susan, you're up next, Susan.
All right, am I on?
Yes, you are.
Okay, I've got a dust storm going on outside. I'm Susan Edwards and I live in Phoenix, I am a New Englander originally, and I'm the person who wrote the letter to the editor of the Patriot. Um, you all need to know that the calling this a Pandora's box is minor description of what hell you can be signing up for. Um, in two thousand sixteen, our legislator, legislature passed a bill that prevented cities, towns, and counties from regulating short-term rentals, and Pandora's box opened up horribly. We now have twenty-five thousand that we know of, short-term rentals in the state of Arizona. Scottsdale went from zero to over four thousand in four years. Um, and, um, my neighborhood, I live in a really nice historic neighborhood in central Phoenix, and I'm, I had this one across the street, I've become very active. Uh, don't kid yourself, when you let people in for these short stays, these are unstaffed motels, they're businesses acting in residential areas. The house across from me with four bedrooms, rented out, sleeps nineteen, great pool and game room, had frat parties, had sex with prostitutes in the backyard, had beer pong in the front yard, and one of the guys announced he needed to go to the, I need to pee, and went in the side yard and peed right in front of the world. Um, and I would, if you're gonna do this, um, I strongly urge you to, if you're determined to do it, a seven-day minimum, that's more the traditional family visit. Yeah, you know, we, we've discussed, we think it's anonymity of those shorter stays that do it, but you're gonna have weddings, you're going to have, um, uh, party crews, look that up, awful, uh, there was a three-hundred-person one in Paradise Valley just a couple weeks ago, uh, they trashed the house, uh, people were packing guns, they, they, these things, they set them up and they do it on social media and kids see it and think, oh, it's a nice neighborhood, I can go, they charge them to get in, they sell underage people, drugs and alcohol, and it's just fiasco. They have somebody posted to watch for the police, because the police can't cite you unless they actually see you doing this. The HOA does not protect you, because the HOA, when someone is violating, then has to take the person to court. That happened up in Carefree at Desert Mountain, and they spent, the, the association has spent two hundred thousand dollars already trying to go after somebody who's doing this, and he keeps appealing. Uh, it, uh, it should, should help to prevent party crews, it should also prevent renters from mistreating the, the residents, because the, the three days of under is where you really get the party people. The question, one of the questions I have on the house things is, um, could someone buy two houses in one LLC and then set up another LLC to buy two more and another LLC to buy two more? Uh, that's, oh, scares me. Um, and I guarantee you, they will lie about occupancy, they're gonna tell you that they've got these people, but you're gonna send somebody in and count who's there? You can't. Um, the other problem is, besides your new sewer system, which terrifies me, because you start putting in twenty, thirty, forty people in a house that's designed, that the system's designed for six, her household is gonna.
Mrs. Edwards, Mrs. Edwards, I'm gonna ask you to finish up, okay?
Okay, um, are the properties going to be taxed at commercial rates or at residential rates, because it's not fair to the residential people, and, um, understand that, um, it's, it can be horrible, you can, in Sedona, there's a house being built with eight master bedrooms with separate locked entries, that's not a house, that's a motel. So, you, you, uh, and we're also losing what limited affordable housing there is, because they're buying them in bulk and, um, flipping them, okay?
Thank you, Mrs. Edwards, have a good night now, thank you. Sarah, do we have anybody else?
Yep, we have six more people.
Okay. Who's next?
Just wait for them to join us. Mr. McGathlin, now's your turn for public comment. Mr. McGathlin, you need to unmute your microphone, please.
Okay.
Yes, you're all set, we're listening to you, thank you, Mr. McGathlin.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna talk just about the general ordinance, since the zoning ordinance has been remanded to the planning board.
I appreciate that, thank you.
My name is Don McGathlin, I've lived in Kootenay for thirty-one years. Uh, the general ordinance generally is adequate regarding registration, operating agent, and, and complaint process. However, there are two major flaws. The first one is code enforcement. Having read the STA, STR survey done in November of two thousand and nineteen, there were eight pages of constituent frustration and over three hundred complaints. The common theme was a lack of code enforcement and a lack of timely inspections. However, town officials said that they have only seven complaints. There is certainly a lack of solid data. Citizens need to submit complaints to the appropriate party. Town departments need to record complaints. No one really knows if the eight code enforcement officers at ISD is adequate or not, but if not, the town needs to meet its responsibilities to provide for additional personnel. The second issue is section one ninety dash fifteen. There needs to be more specific guidelines and timelines for complaints, investigations, finding of violations, notice of violations, hearing, and decision. In one ninety dash fifteen D, we need to specify a reasonable timeframe, I would suggest two or three days for complaints. There are a few other changes I would suggest. There is no need for an STR owner residing on premises to have an operating agent, it seems very bureaucratic and unnecessary. For the most part, these are mom and pop operations. Second, first-year fees seem very minimal. In Newport, Rhode Island, and I studied that STR ordinance, the fee is a hundred and fifteen dollars for filing and registration. Third, delete the number of occupants plus an additional two. The requirement of the seven-night minimum stay is good, except for an owner residing on the premises. And finally, the Mass DOR, Department of Revenue, Information to Barnstable and all communities in the state regarding STRs does not, does not separate the different types of STR, such as owner residing on premises, absentee owner occupants, and investor owners. With the approval of the general ordinance, the registration process can commence, and the town will know all of the different types of STRs, some of which will require no regulation, and some will require regulation, and in turn, this will allow the town to develop a well-drafted zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGathlin, I appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, next for public comment is Christian. Christian, can you please unmute yourself and introduce yourselves for public comment?
Hi, guys.
regarding STRs does not, does not separate the different types of STR, such as owner residing on premises, absentee owner occupants, and investor owners. With the approval of the general ordinance, the registration process can commence, and the town will know all of the different types of STRs, some of which will require no regulation and some will require regulation. And in turn, this will allow the town to develop a well-drafted zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGathlin. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next for public comment is Christian. Christian, can you please unmute yourself and introduce yourself for public comment?
Hi, guys. My name's Christian Teig. I'm assuming you can hear me okay.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you for informing me of that. Wow, the predictability. I sent an email to you guys today. It was pretty verbose. I've been working on it for a while. But these, these meetings never cease to, never cease to amaze me. We're, we're, I think we can all agree that, that there's some controversy here. Here's the problem, okay? I have yet to hear any data. We have not identified one shred of evidence that any of the things which have, any of the accusations that have been made of STR owners or their guests conducting themselves in any fashion. When the town released their numbers for crime that occur around STRs, that number was .0012%. 12 one-thousandths of a percent. Now, I'll say that that's probably wrong, okay? Because they were put on the spot by having to provide that number. Let's say it was off by a factor of 10. So we're at 12 hundredths of a percent. Anybody want, it's not a far reach of logic to assume that short-term renters, the guests, the operators are the most law-abiding citizens who dwell or live in the town of Barnstable. Let's talk about trash and other violations. The fact that such violations occur, violations which are already on the books, they should be handled with the regulations that are on the books. But I challenge anybody this. Find me the pictures. Show me the pictures of the dumpsters overflowing and the kids in togas on the front lawn. The pictures don't exist because those problems are so rare as to void the impossibility that somebody walks by without a phone in their pocket to take a picture. If people are this angry about these sorts of activities, the partying, you'd think that some videos would exist. All these, or the speeding in the neighborhoods, the back roads of Osherville are overrun by kids with loud Hondas. That doesn't happen. If it did happen, there would be pictures all over the internet. The Cape Cod Times would be there in a split second because it's news. Okay, it's news in a current time where there is a complete and total vacuum of news. The fact that none of those, none of that evidence exists is not an indication that it's a continued problem. It's an indication that if anything, STRs are a solution to such problems. These are people who have families. These are mothers and fathers, brothers and sisters, and their kids who come to the Cape to eat ice cream and fried food. Okay? The fact that people want to cut down the, the length of tenancy down to three days or less is an indication of how blatantly out of touch many of the members of this town are. That is the modern family. The modern family is a dad that can't get a weekend, that can't get a full weekend off because he's got to work Saturday mornings and maybe Sunday afternoon. Right? We have plenty of weekend renters, especially on the shoulder seasons when school starts. God forbid it doesn't this year. And no evidence has been provided that the .0012% of the violations which the town says occur in STRs occurred at renter, at rentals, which, which had a period of one day, two day? You'd think if this was such a problem, that data would be easy to quantify. But no. Barnstable Watch's website shows a disturbing picture of three handsome young men looking backwards in selfie mode in the front seat of a WestFollyha VW. That's the best they can do. They tell stories about things that happen in, in, in Arizona. You know what the number of STRs in Arizona are? It's 25,000, right? That's less, that's less than 1%, less than 1% of that housing stuff. Sure, it creates problems in certain towns. I guarantee it does. But who hears the idea that people are coming on and creating accusations such as prostitution or drug dealing? That stuff doesn't happen here. We all need to all agree on it. Another thing we need to agree on is that short-term renters are not currently mentioned in the zoning laws, which means they're, they're, they're legal. Whether you like it or not, they exist. It is a long-time practice, hundreds of years. Generations of people have been doing this. Okay? And it's, they wouldn't be doing it if it wasn't legal because we're law-abiding citizens. Okay? And the third and final thing is that any individual who owns a house, any individual who owns a property is an investor. Okay? If people, if properties were not investments, people wouldn't own them, they'd rent them. Okay?
Thank you.
This is a, this is a pillar of our beachside community.
Thank you, Christian.
I hope, and the fact of the matter is, I hope you guys vote for this, for this regulation tonight so we can end this conversation and get back to having fun this summer. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Have a good night. Ellen, Ellen, you're next. Thank you for your patience. Ellen, you have to unmute yourself, Ellen.
Thank you. Is that better?
Yes, much better. Thank you, Ellen.
Thanks for the reminder. Good evening, town council members. Thank you very much. My name is Ellen Nozel. I live in Centerville. Thank you for extending the public hearing time this evening, and I hope town council members can remember the voices of your citizens in your next meeting in two weeks. Nothing parties like a rental. That's a phrase used by renters, perhaps wearing a grin and a thumbs up. It's also used by neighbors of poorly regulated rental properties with their heads in their hands who are worn down by the problems they cause. It is this phrase that brings us together tonight. The town council was wise to request input from civic organizations from Centerville, West Barnstable, Freiter Hyannis, and Osherville. Their ideas would strengthen the proposed regulations of short-term rentals in Barnstable. I implore the town council to review the suggestions and incorporate them into language for General Ordinance 2020-192 before voting on it. Adequate time to review these well-thought-out suggestions requires a postponement of voting until the fall, at least. In addition, vacationers who are off Cape in August and other stakeholders would be able to participate possibly in person. The civic organizations have put forth common sense suggestions to strengthen the ordinance regulations for STRs, including phasing out investor-owned STRs over time, a definition of a portion of a home, limiting parking, an improved database of registered owners, 24/7 enforcement personnel who are not Barnstable police, owner occupancy requirement, a limit to the number of rentals per year, and a minimum number of nights stay per rental. This last point is of key concern to residents, that is to say, people who reside in these zones. The fact is, one-night parties do exist, and people can create large crowds coming from anywhere and everywhere to plague otherwise quiet neighborhoods. The onus of the evidence of these parties should not be on neighbors with cell phones. We should be taking on our word. Crowds equal noise, and in a pandemic, the spread of disease. To ignore this component is unconscionable. These are the shortest of all short-term renters. My husband and I chose Barnstable as our home for all the wonderful things it offers, many nearby services, unmatched natural beauty, and a quiet neighborhood of caring and conscientious people. We owe it to the town to do everything in our power to protect those things. I ask you to consider incorporating the language proposed by thoughtful citizens into new ordinances, providing stronger regulations for STRs before voting. Let's get it right the first time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Ellen. Have a good night now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken, you're next. Thank you, Ken.
Hello. I'll try to be short.
Thank you, Ken.
My name is Kenneth Nozel, and I live in Centerville. We live on a quiet, dead-end street surrounded by owner-occupied, well-kept homes. We have a neighborhood with many older residents and retirees who enjoy a peaceful street, not accustomed to large parties, congested street traffic, and loud noise levels. This is why we bought our home on the street and why many have chosen to retire and remain here. I'm deeply concerned that what is being proposed in 2020-192 will jeopardize our neighborhood as well as others in our surrounding communities. It does not go far enough in regulating short-term rentals. Do it once and do it right. I have read the possible amendment ideas concerning proposed general ordinance changes submitted from the four civic associations addressed to the town council. These are sound, well-thought-out proposals to consider, and I implore the council to do so. As elected officials representing all of us, it is your duty to gather as much information and input from all citizens to make these critical decisions that will affect our lives and neighborhoods. If you need more time to consider, then take the time to do so. I receive email and postal correspondence on a daily basis from multiple interested parties or investors wanting to purchase my home for obvious business interests and monetary reasons. Let us not sell our neighborhoods for profit, but consider the public good by enacting tightly-controlled regulations on short-term rentals. This would make our properties an unwelcome target for these enterprises. Let us adopt strong regulatory checks and controls so we can allow short-term rentals to exist, the positive role they play in our community, while not allowing some to circumvent guidelines, turning our neighborhoods into unruly, overcrowded, one-night-loud party venue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ken. Appreciate it. Have a good night now. And Martin McNeely, please.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak, excuse me, tonight. Just to go over a few things. Martin McNeely from Marson's Mills. There's still apparently a lot of confusion in the public's perspective on some of the regulations here. There's still confusion that we can allow. Short-term rentals are currently allowed in the town of Barnstable. People still think that this is a change for some reason. Short-term rentals have been around, as other people have said, for decades. So there's nothing new there. And then I wanted to go back for a minute to go back to what happened in public comment at the beginning of the night because I think it's important to do so. There was some talk from the president of the town council and others about some issues within the town council that has caused some trust issues with the residents of the town. I'd like to go a different tact. I'd like to go that there's some residents of the town that have been speaking on the short-term residential, short-term rental issue that have been disrespectful and trying to belittle members of the town staff, the town council, and town boards. So I think we've gotten off task a little bit at times. I don't think it's just been town council members or planning board members. I think it's been a select group of residents also that have been out to discredit town officials to make them look bad at any cost to get their point across. And I think it's the wrong way to go about things. So that being said, to get back on the topic at hand, I think the regulations as they stand should be voted for. The regulations, as the public should be made aware of, also can be changed. The regulations aren't etched in stone. If you find that six months from now the regulations are not tough enough, that they're not doing what the subcommittee thought they would do, the town council can take the regulations up again and revise them. I think some of the ideas that the civic association has and some of their proposals is very restrictive to short-term rentals. I think it would, I think, again, we need, we haven't heard much of this tonight, but I think we need to look at the financial impact of severely restricting or eliminating short-term rentals from many zones in the town of Barnstable. It's something that's been done. It's being done. It's not new. It continues to be done. I don't think all of a sudden, next week, we're going to have double the amount of short-term rentals we have now if you pass this regulation. The regulation is being put forward to help with the problems, not create problems. I don't know where that message has gotten out there. You're trying to solve a problem, not create a problem. So again, I support the regulations as they're written. Let's get them out there. Let's revise them if we need to, and let's move on. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Appreciate it. Have a good night now.
We have Chris's iPad. Chris, if you could unmute and introduce yourself, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Chris Wolf. I appreciate all of your work and your, the chance to say something tonight. There are two kinds of rentals. Some of you blur them, and I'm, I'm calling in tonight to ask you not to. There are traditional Cape Cod rentals where people who actually live in homes sometimes rent them out to others. This has happened for generations. Everyone supports that use, and no one wants to end that use. Then there's a different use. There are places that no one ever uses as a home, not at all. Instead, they are used exclusively as overnight lodging houses available every night of, of the year. New, new guest after new guest gets a lockbox code from an owner who lives somewhere else after the guest sends them money. They are just cash cows. Those two things are very different uses. Early on, Councilor Cullen said that there's no way to deal with this problem without dealing with investor-owned properties and length of stay. I remember that because I was so happy to hear someone focus on investors using homes as hotels as a problem to deal with. Then the solution was to cap investors to two. I actually, I thought that was actually a joke. That quote "solution" means it's okay with you if every single home in this town is an investor-operated business venture. I don't know what they were thinking. Last week, I heard a counselor on the radio calling this change a clarification. Changing zoning to give permission to use all homes everywhere as a full-time business is no clarification. I'm calling on you to ask to stop this change in use of clarification and to deal head-on with the differences. When you blur the two, you do a real disservice to the Cape Codders who rent their homes responsibly and do not change its use. During the planning board hearing, where no one actually wanted to talk about zoning, by the way, one of the town lawyers said rightly, "No one ever heard of short-term rentals in this context in our lifetime, and certainly not when the zoning in town was created." I'm asking all of you to recognize the difference between traditional Cape rentals and the new use of homes as businesses that no one ever heard of in our lifetime. Towns across the country have had to protect themselves from the terror of Airbnb, so much so that its CEO just apologized for trashing suburban America. Businesses don't belong in residential neighborhoods. Please do not let them in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. We appreciate it. Thank you.
President Hebert, that's the end of public comment via Zoom.
Excuse my expression, but thank God. Thank you for that. Counselors, thank you for your patience. I would now entertain a motion to continue item number 2020-193 and to continue public hearing to our next regular meeting on September 3rd, 2020.
I would make that motion, Mr. President.
Make a motion.
Second.
Second. We have a first, a second. Thank you very much. Madam Cook, if you would, please, a roll call.
Counselors, Lebec.
Yes.
Impersonating.
Gary.
Yes.
Impersonating.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Dagwone.
Dagwone.
Yes.
Rob Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it. So, counselors, the new business is settled, just to be referred. And I would ask your indulgence. On the appointments committee, we would like to change, make a motion on that. Many committees assure these members. Many committees are short these members, so I'm going to be formally asking that we suspend the rules and vote on that tonight. Also, we know that we're going to go into, and I would ask councillor Stein Hilber's indulgence, should we postpone executive session till our next meeting?
Well, that's really up to you, Mr. President. It's up to the leadership.
My feeling is, members of that committee, councillor Cullen, do you have a thought on this?
Yes, I don't want to push it. Let's do it. Let's do something.
You want to do it tonight? Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Very good. That's what we'll do. So if we could, please, if, we're going to go to page 16, and I'm going to ask councillor Shaughnessy to please read that into the minutes of the night, or is it the evening, please? That's on page 16. And that's item number 2021-006.
Page 17, I believe, President Hebert. This is new business, being referred to a public hearing on the September 3rd, 2020 meeting. This is item number 2021-006. Appropriation and transfer order in the amount of 389, sorry, $289,600 of community preservation funds for the payment of fiscal year 2021 debt service on the acquisition of the Hyannis Golf Course.
Second.
Thank you very much. So this is, this is to refer to a public hearing on September 9th, item number 2021-006. Madam Clerk, a roll call, please.
Councillors, Mary.
Yes.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes. Left or right?
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I would ask councillor Leveque to please read into the orders of the day, item number
Thank you, Mr. President. This is new business, first reading, refer to a second reading on September 3rd, 2020.
Excuse me.
These two have the wrong item.
Do you want to take a vote to suspend the rules?
So, yes, at the same time, I don't know if we have to take two votes on this. I would also move that we suspend rule 15 of the town council rules to allow the town council to act upon item 2021-007 with only a first reading, again, because we want to fill these vacancies.
Second.
There's a second. Do we need to take a vote on that before we read the item?
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Dagwone. Ralph Karsetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Ten yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Leveque, if you didn't agree with the item.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. Point of clarification, the agenda that I have, that I received today at 10:55 a.m. in my email box, does not include the names of the appointees that we passed on this past Maybe, I don't know if Cindy Lovell's available, but I don't know if I can get another.
Matthew, I just sent it to you via your email. It's the correct list that everybody else has, if you want to read it from your email.
Point of order, someone else could pinch hit.
Yeah, maybe somebody else will read it, because I don't, again, I don't know if there was another agenda sent this afternoon, but I don't have another email in my inbox at this point.
Okay.
Missed my baseball reference? I said pinch hit.
Good job.
I would, maybe councillor Stein Hilber, if you could do that for me, please?
The only one I got, Matt.
I love it. Thank you.
Yeah, I printed out the one from this morning, too. So, and I wasn't at the appointments committee, so I wouldn't know if you appointed anyone else, but item 2021-007, appointments to a board committee commission, Sandy Neck Board, Joe O'Brien of the Recreation Commission as a representative member. The Sandy Neck Board, the term expiring on 6/23. Land Acquisition and Preservation Committee, Tracy Pratt of Kewett as a regular member due term expiring 6/21. Border Health, F.B. Tom Lee is a regular member, term expiring 6/23. Dan Litzkow of Centerville is an alternate member to a term expiring 6/22. Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee, Wendy Solomon of Kewett, a regular member, the term expiring 6/23, as read.
May I continue, Mr. President?
Yes, please, councillor Mary, please.
The Disability Commission, Michael Hershey of Centerville, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/21. Old Kings Highway Historic District Committee, Jeffrey Goldstein, is an alternate member to a term expiring 6/2021. Planning Board, Robert Twist, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/22. Youth Commission, Juliana O'Reilly, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/2021, and Connor O'Reilly, as a regular member to a term expiring 6/2021. Zoning Board of Appeals, Emmanuel Als, Centerville, is an associate member to a term expiring 6/2021, as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Thank you very much. Any comments by councillors? Seeing none. This is to approve item number 2021-007, appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Madam Clerk, please, a roll call.
Councillors, Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Dagwone.
Yes.
Ralph Karsetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Snap.
Yes.
Ten eleven yes.
Thank you very much, councillors. Item number 2021-008, councillor Star, please read that into the orders of the evening.
Okay, this is number 2021-008.
Yes, and it's on page nineteen, yeah.
A grant to accept in the amount of $63,600 for the purpose of funding the Department of Public Works Water Pollution Control Facility Asset Management Project. That's a little second. It's new business, referred to a public hearing on September 3rd, 2020.
Point of order, this may be acted upon.
Thank you. Roll call, majority. Did Mr. Santos, Director Santos, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, thank you. In August 2019, the town of Barnstable submitted a project evaluation form with the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Asset Management Planning Grant Program. In April of this year, Mass DEP issued their final 2020 Intended Use Plan for the SRF, and the town's Water Pollution Control Facility Asset Management Project was approved as a project in the plan. This is a reimbursable branch rather than a loan. The DPW has proposed a model for the execution of the project that could be completed by a combination of in-house staff and consultant support to prepare the final asset management report. The report will include an evaluation of existing buildings, tanks, and treatment process equipment currently in use at the facility. Report will also include a five-year recommended action plan for asset renewal and replacement. The total cost of the project is estimated at $106,000. Funding for this project will be provided through a cash match of $21,200 from the Water Pollution Control Division FY21 approved operating budget, in-kind services, which will be staff salaries estimated at $21,200, and a reimbursement of $63,600 through a grant from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. The grant has been approved by DEP and is on their intended use plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillors, any questions of Director Santos? And we believe Mr. Foyle is also here.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we vote on item 2021-008, as read.
Second. We have a first and a second. Thank you very much. This is to approve item 2021-008. A roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Councillors, Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes. Excuse me, did I just say the wrong number? Was it 009?
008.
008, okay. So, thank you.
Bogan.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Dagwone.
Yes.
Ralph Karsetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Snap.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would ask councillor Stein Hilber to please read in item number 2021-009.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is item 2021-009, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $8,500,000 for the purpose of funding the solid handling upgrades construction project as outlined in the fiscal year 2021, fiscal year 2025 capital improvement plan, as written. Want to refer this to a public hearing on September 3rd.
Thank you. Thank you, councillors. We have a first and we have a second. Madam Clerk, this is a vote on item number 2021-009, to refer to public hearing.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Dagwone.
Yes.
Ralph Karsetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Snap.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I would ask councillor Bogan to please read into the record of the evening, item number 2021-010, that could be found on page 23.
Item number 2021-010, zoning map amendment to expand the multifamily affordable housing zoning district to include assessors map parcel 250 on 60 at 3 White Hall Way in the town of Hyannis, refer to the planning board.
Second.
We have a first, we have a second. Any discussion?
Move the question?
Move the question. Okay, we have a first, second, we're going to move the question, but this is.
Take a vote on that.
Mm-hmm.
Unless you want to withdraw that and rephrase it.
I'll rephrase it. We can, can we vote? I'd like to vote on the item 2021-010.
We have a first and a second, and this is to approve the item.
Refer to the planning board.
To refer to the planning board. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Councillor, Bogan.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Yes.
Ralph Karsetti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Snap.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, councillors. I would ask, please, that councillor Mary would please read into the record of the day, item number 2021-011, please.
Yes, Mr. President, this is new business. It may be acted upon and requires a roll call, majority vote. It's item number 2021-011. It's resolved, the town council petitioned the county commissioners of Barnstable County to formally discontinue section of county highway, namely that portion of Finney's Lane from Quocket Lane, Wyanna Road, as described in an order of taking by the Barnstable County Commissioners, reported in the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds in Book 476, page 38, and as shown on a plot of land entitled County of Barnstable, Town of Barnstable, Plan of a Countyway, Centerville to Barnstable, as laid out by the county commissioners dated July 17, 1930, as written.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Any conversation on this? Seeing none.
I'll give you a rationale on that.
Yes, please.
Thank you. This matter relates to a title search that's been done on the route coming up from Cobles as far as the Vinny Wind project is concerned, but it also is vitally important to us from the perspective that along that same route, we intend to co-locate at the same time as the Vinny Wind installation, the sewer pipes necessary to service various sections of that area. And we will be required at the town level to certify good title to the sections of roadway that are funded by some of the funding sources that are potentially available to us. And we, in the process of cooperating with Vinny Wind, we've determined that the section of roadway that's identified between Quocket Lane and Ianna Road, Route 132, sits, because of a taking in 1930 by the county, still sits on the, at least according to the records of the registry of deeds, still sits in the county name. That is dating back to 1930. There are some indications, and certainly the common belief is that at some time, many years ago, the county abandoned all of its roadways to, at least the town of Barnstable, to the town of Barnstable. It would appear that if that was done appropriately, there certainly should have been a recorded transfer or relinquishment or abandonment of the county interest in that road, in which case it would have reverted to town ownership. That is missing at the registry, and we need to correct that error. And we will be moving forward with that. As I said, it's a vital indicator for our usages because our lending, our granting and lending sources will require certification and title. It's a straightforward procedure as far as the county is concerned. We, at the town level, petitioned the county commissioners to abandon it. They schedule a public hearing with notice to abutters, and about two weeks later, they're then able to vote on it. They did take a preliminary exam of this a week ago, and I believe yesterday actually voted, I respectfully suggest probably prematurely, we're still discussing that with county council, whether or not the advertising is required, but I think I would in abundance of caution since we're the ones that are going to be certifying the title, we'd like to see a hearing with fully advertised, according to the statute. And at the end of that hearing process, presuming we have the reaffirmation of the vote, the road would then revert to town ownership, and we are also petitioning, as the statute requires, that the roadway, once it comes to the town, remain in public way. This vote calls for that, and so that at the end of this process, when the county relinquishes, it will be a public way now in ownership of the town, and it will remain a public way. In terms of fiscal years, the town has been operating, plowing, paving, and repairing this stretch of road as if we were indeed the record title owner to it. It's unclear exactly when that might have happened, there's some indication, and the late 40s that this transaction took place. If we can find the record of it, we can just put it on record, but to keep this moving, on the presumption that we're not going to find that record of relinquishment, we'd ask that the council approve this petition to the commissioners. Because we've been treating it as our own, there is no fiscal impact, it's the short story on that school. Happy to want to take any questions. Thank you.
Councillor Neely.
Thank you, Mr. President. Turner McGlaughlin, I just wanted to.
Attorney McGlaughlin, I just want to make the point, I assume that all abutters have been contacted against this parcel and this road.
That is part of the county responsibility when they advertise to abandon. And so, we will, again, work with County Council closely to make sure. We have all of that information. It's not our responsibility for this vote. It is the county responsibility before they vote to abandon to notify all abutters along that way.
But the vote to abandon took place in the past, or?
No, no, that's the problem. We can't confirm it. No one's put their hands on that record.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Counselors have any questions of the attorney, attorneys? Or are the manager?
Mr. President, I make a motion, we vote on item 2021-011, as read.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first, we have a second. So, again, this is to approve item 2021-011. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselors, Cullen.
Yes.
Dagwone.
Yes.
Ralph Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Snap.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Bogan.
Yes.
11 yes.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Counselors.
Counselor President, Markel. Just point of information.
Yes.
These types of county layout issues are all over town, and the town's been maintaining these roads for decades, if not longer. I just point this out because as we move forward with infrastructure improvements, specifically sewer expansion, we will be back to you from time to time with similar results. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor President, if I may, just.
Yes, yes, Charlie.
We've identified other properties through the efforts of Vinny Wind Council that are going to need this same treatment. And we're, as we continue to work on the Mother's Park issue, we believe we have the same issue appearing there. So, we may have some more votes for you to consider on, in September.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your good work on that. Thank you. Okay, Counselors, the last item is a discussion to go into executive session. So, I would entertain a vote to go into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct a strategy session of preparation for negotiations with a non-union employee, Mr. Mark Els, a town manager, and not to return to the open meeting.
That's your motion, Mr. President.
Yep. And I would second that motion.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, if you would take a roll call on this.
Counselors, Bogan.
Yes.
Cullen.
Yes.
Dagwone. Dagwone. Ralph Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Snap.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
11 yes.
Thank you. Thank you. So, now we're prepared to go into executive session. One of the requirements is going to be that there's no one else.